...o'clock, so I guess you probably should. Okay. Good deal. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and would everyone please rise for the invocation? Pastor Jared Novak with the New Life Church, please come forward.
Good morning.
Morning.
Please bow with me. Dear Father in Heaven, Lord, first we thank you for this beautiful day. I'd like to lift up our men and women serving bravely in our military, Lord, around the world, and just ask your protection over them. Lord, I think of our first responders serving in our communities today. I also ask that you protect them. Lord, thank you for these councilmen and women, and the mayor, Lord, as they serve our community. Please give them the wisdom they need to conduct this meeting. And going throughout today, I pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin, here. Councilman Slacta. Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Longheart.
Here.
And I believe Councilman Slacta is on vacation, excused absence. His mom called. No, I'm just kidding. Whatever, whatever it takes. He has a note, right? Okay. All right, and at this time, we'll go ahead and take public comment on agenda items, and that's on agenda items only, please. Anyone wishing to speak to anything on the agenda, please come forward. Hey, stranger.
It's always good to see you, Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you.
Members of the council, my name is Richard Ferrera. 24993 Wynwood Boulevard, Bonita Springs. Just a couple of things in the timeframe that I have. We have a green sheet that indicates fifty-five point one-six acres Raptor Bay property. I understand that the attorney will be here about eleven o'clock, so we'll come back. But I just want to allay some concerns that the people have in that area. One is traffic on Coconut Road. Now, you know that's in the Sterro, it's in Lee County, but that road is getting awful congested. Secondly, it's wetlands. And fifty-five acres adjacent to that Weeks property, near the Weeks property, in the Sterro Bay. We have concerns about that. Now, we're not taking a position, I'm not taking a position on it, but leave that to the council. But I do urge due diligence, best management practices, and to make sure that congestion doesn't tie up that whole area. Also, I want to commend the council and city staff, particularly Alene and Community Development, for explaining the forty-one overlay, what is allowed and what is not to be allowed. I think that's a real good step, because coming into Bonita, you want to put your best foot forward. People who pass through, people who have designs to open a business here, they want to live here. We want to make a good impression. So, the overlay opens up, for example, there's one section here for a slaughterhouse. If you think the high school is a problem, try opening up a slaughterhouse next to somebody's community. I mean, they've got pitchforks and lanterns out of forty-one from here. So, it's important. And I want to commend the city and the council for going forward with this, and I hope you give it its due respect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time on any agenda item, please come forward?
Morning, council. Greg Dewitt, Assistant Chief, Bonita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District. I just want to speak on items E and F. Just saying what a pleasure it was to work with staff, with Audrey Vance, to draw these documents up, and I will be here if you guys have any question, if there is any discussion on it. I'm sure that myself or Ms. Vance could answer any concerns you may have on those two items. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Please come forward.
Yes, Rick Steinmeier. We're monitoring the water in DRGR area, I assume, with fifteen different places. We've been monitoring it for at least ten years, if not more. It's over half a million dollars. Now, how has this improved the quality of our water? Now, we want to double the price to find out how much water there is. Has this really made a difference to the water quality of the river? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we will continue with proclamations and presentations, and with our good friend Rudy, the Small Business Development Center of FGCU. Right?
Guten Morgen, Bürgermeister, Leider van der Raat, Damen und Herren. Het doet me genoegen u voor te doen.
Oh, wait, wait. I think you got the wrong place. Bonita Springs.
Oops!
Risk or something?
Sorry about that. I apologize for my lapse in the mother tongue. We have family visiting at home from the old country, and I suspect that's what caused it. I left the house speaking Dutch. But it does remind me that the SBDC is multilingual in a territory where it is needed and will become more so. Personally, I've had consultations at your cottage, in German, in French, and we even came close to my mother tongue. We had a discussion in Flemish this summer. Our five-county center has the capacity for other languages as well, and we draw on a statewide network if necessary. If we need to venture below, beyond our own capabilities, these language skills are needed because we live in a territory that's more and more becoming involved in international trade. That in turn includes foreigners coming to paradise to start and operate businesses. So, Mr. Mayor, allow me to restart. Thank you for the reminder.
Right ahead.
First, my name tag is on straight. You will notice. That seems to be a problem for me. Second, it is my pleasure to report to you on my efforts of the Bonita Springs Estero Office of the Small Business Development Center at FGCU. We are in the process of finalizing a successful year 2015. As in the past, I have enclosed some statistics in your folder regarding the Bonita Springs Estero Office, as well as our five-county center. What those sheets show is that our Bonita office was involved in the creation of twenty-seven new jobs so far this year. My strong suspicion is that's an undercount. I also would like to caution you on listening to numbers like that, because our good friends at the EDC make reports. They work with some of the same clients. Your city staff works with some of the same clients and may double count, triple count, some of those numbers. But it does reflect that we have been active. You might be interested to learn that I provided fifty-eight different individuals with two-hundred-and-twenty-two counseling sessions covering six-hundred-and-seventeen hours. Seventeen of those fifty-eight individuals are not yet in business. They are what we refer to as pre-venture individual. They're considering, they're working. We're helping them go from their dream to something that can become a reality. We hope to bring some of those to Bonita Springs if they manage to open a business. In addition to those efforts, I have assisted a number of not-for-profit charitable organizations with management and administrative advice. We have presented fourteen seminars in the territory on topics relating to money in business, managing the business instead of letting the business manage you, social media for business how-to sessions, inexpensive but effective marketing approaches, and a few others. We cooperate with community entities. We receive and send referrals to our local banks, to the chambers of Bonita and Estera, to the local and the county EDCs, and certainly, last but not least, to the city of Bonita Springs. Moral of the story, we try our best to be productive, constructive citizens who advocate for the growth and development of our piece of paradise. I want to take a moment to compliment, as was done earlier this morning, the city staff. They're a pleasure to work with, and I know that starts at the top with you and Carl. It includes the department heads, and it certainly includes too many to name, people who actually do the work. This year, our state office has been busy generating some communication pieces in an effort to spread the word about our skill and experience. I have provided two copies of those items for your holiday reading stack. You've got to do something during the break. A report by the Center of Research and Economic Opportunity at the University of West Florida entitled "Small Business and Its Impact in Florida", I think may be of interest to you. I hope as much that the annual report of the Florida Small Business Development Centers, Accelerating Florida's Economy, is of interest to you. I've taken the liberty of leaving a few extra copies at the back table for those citizens who would like to see it for themselves. One of the reasons the state is doing that is the wealth of knowledge and experience at our centers here at FGCU and throughout the state just is absolutely amazing. We have hundreds of years of business experience. We have expertise in so many areas of running a business. It literally blows my mind, and I think I've been around a little bit. Allow me to step aside from my prepared comments for a moment and discuss the situation at Old Forty-One in downtown Bonita. I think the city has done an absolutely gorgeous job of putting signage and information up. I thank you. I appreciate it. I just wonder why the FSBDC at FGCU was left off, and maybe I just quit wondering having said that. I hope you're aware, and I hope our citizens are aware, that businesses are suffering while the construction is going on. I am in touch constantly with some of our business owners. Some of the drop in business is severe. So, what I would like to encourage the city to do, and what I personally wish to do, is invite anybody and everybody who has any kind of reason to come downtown and struggle through our construction roadblocks and difficult ways of finding some of our businesses. Come down and do business in downtown during the construction, please. With that, allow me to finish by being amongst the first to wish you happy holidays, and to remind you that as the shopping season progresses, Cottage One, behind the construction in downtown Riverside Park, is open for business. I thank you. I'll be glad to answer any question or hear any comments you may have.
Rudy, thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions for Rudy? Thank you so much, and happy holidays to you as well. Thank you. Okay, council, we are to the consent agenda. Please look at it carefully. It's A through G. Once you've looked at it carefully, let me know if there's anything you'd like to pull.
I'd like to pull B and G.
B and G? And G. Anything else, council? Okay, is there a motion to approve the remainder?
So moved.
There's a motion to approve the remainder. Is a second bill? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Okay, item B. Mike?
I just wanted to bring this up to clarify, to make sure that this wasn't the water sampling in the DRGR and that it's the normal every year that we do on the river. There have been some questions.
Would you like me to respond?
Yes, please.
Good morning. My name's Matt Feeney, Public Works Director, for the record. No, sir, this is not the DRGR groundwater, ground and surface water monitoring. We are in the process, we've advertised that for letters of interest. We have a selection committee meeting actually tomorrow to make a recommendation for council to consider for that monitoring, which is tied specifically to the DRGR area. This monitoring is for water quality, which is a little more labor-intensive. It measures nutrients such as nitrogen in the water. It's something we've been doing since 2006, and it gives us an indication of the effects of our nitrogen reduction projects, where to cite them for the Imperial River Basin Management Action Plan.
Just to concentrate on the importance of that is that what you're doing is you're building a track record so that we can see if it's getting worse, if it's getting better, where we might need to concentrate our work at, and also, we're trying to build like a correlation between cause and effect along there. So, it is important stuff that we're doing, right?
Yes, sir, and it fundamentally measures a different benchmark than what the DRGR monitoring is going to be measuring. It's measuring surface water runoff and the amount of nutrient pollution that's in it. The DRGR water monitoring is going to be measuring groundwater levels in the superficial aquifer, as well as water levels primarily as they come through rain events and the ditches out there so that we can get an idea of the hydro period or how much water is out there and how long it stays out there above ground as well as below ground. So, it's two kind of different problems, so to speak.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, and there's no conflicts of interest anywhere with this company? With who they represent or have represented in the past?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
Okay.
No, it's...
Have we checked for that?
No, sir. It's the company that we've been using since 2006. It's a reputable engineering firm that's been in the area for some time.
They must come in contact with other folks. I'm just curious.
I'm sure that they do.
Okay.
Any conflicts, Audrey?
There's legally, there's no conflicts, as I understand what a conflict is. However, they do do business where they represent, for example, they represent BSU, the professional geologist, different aspects of the company. It's a large firm. Also does private development. So, I'm just letting you know, but legally, that is not a conflict.
Okay. Any other questions? Mike, do you want to move the item?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
No.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, item G. Mike?
Item G, I just wanted to clarify, because reading over it, it looks like it's the wrong year's resolution that we're pushing. It's got dates in there for 2015 and takes effect July 1st, 2015. I just wasn't sure if we're kind of supporting the idea behind this, or are we actually supporting this word for word? Because if this is a previous year's draft and it's going to change, I don't, you know... I don't like to support something that I don't really see the final draft. But I mean, the idea behind it, of course, I'm 100% in support of, so.
Carl?
Okay, thank you. We are here asking for your support for the concept of it, not for the years. We are understanding that this is the bill that is currently in front of the legislature in terms of content. But again, if this is too old, we can bring this back with the proper dates in it as well. But it is for supporting the concept. Integrity, as you know, in public service is very important, and the state legislature is looking to strengthen the ways to enforce that throughout the state of Florida.
Okay, Mike, would you be all right with passing this and having the dates corrected on whatever resolution that we put forward?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to make sure that this is actually what the resolution is that they're pushing up there, or... Just because looking at it, it looks like it was something that they tried to pass last year, and maybe they're trying to do it again this year, but, you know, we still have last year's info.
Okay. Well, what would you like us to do, sir? We can bring it back if you want.
Well, I mean, if we're supporting just the idea of it, then that's one thing, but if we're supporting, you know, word for word, the resolution, I'd like to see the actual one that they'll be doing this year.
Okay, be happy to do that. We'll wait.
Okay, you want to go ahead and bring that back at a certain time?
Sure, happy to do that.
Okay, let's see. Why don't we just go ahead and give staff instruction? If you want to make a motion to give staff instruction, do that, make a motion to have it bring it back?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for staff to look into the most recent copy of this resolution and bring it back to us.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, we're sailing right along, and I believe we are to public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak to any city item, please come forward.
Rick Steinmeier. The city's, what, fifteen years old? Depends how you count, from one day in ninety-nine to 2000. Keeps coming back, which, a year back and forth.
Yeah, one of them teenagers, meh.
But I want to, before we get into replacing our mayor, I'd like to compliment him on fifteen or sixteen years of faithful service to the city. First four years working for nothing. And I remember last council meeting, we had a proposal to raise the pay, and I said, "Wait a minute now." We had twenty-five people willing to work for nothing, and now we got about five people willing to work for twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, or three people, or whatever. Where's the heart? The heart, you know, people worked for love in the beginning, and now they're working for money, and that kind of, money doesn't buy happiness or homegrown tomatoes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time on any city-related item, please come forward?
Council, good morning, and thank you for hearing me. My name's Joe Ariel of Regal Drive in Bonita, and my concerns are two. Number one, that we get a high school according to disclosed timelines. And number two, that it's in the best possible location. Where I become confused is when I see all the banter back and forth on location. I don't believe we'll ever gain 100% concurrence on location, so I feel that it's our duty to, number one, develop a legal and legitimate master plan, and number two, use the appropriate amount of due diligence when executing that plan. I want to know if Bonita's master plan is in question? Is its validity in question? Is its legality in question? Has it recently been changed illegally? Has a community's master plan been withheld from public disclosure? My first home in Fort Myers had a lovely forest between it and Route Forty-One. When the land began to clear in favor of a strip mall, I questioned the developer, and his response was this. "What did you think would happen to $1 million per acre land along Route Forty-One?" Point being is that I think you should understand future uses before you buy. My second point of confusion lies in the due diligence around site selection. Did we or did we not vet eleven sites and find seventy-five in Bonita Beach to be the best one? Was that process flawed? Was it illegal? Are we being lied to about the vigor behind that process? Did we or did we not perform proper due diligence? If the master plan is valid and the due diligence process is not flawed, then why would I, as a citizen, allow for the site to be changed in favor of a less advantageous site? Nobody stopped the strip mall because I preferred trees. People are going to complain about the next site, too. Are we going to keep changing sites until we find a group without the resources to fight it? Is this about money and resources, or is it about finding the right site? If the master plan's legal and the due diligence process is proper, we owe it to the citizens of Bonita to put the high school in the location deemed to be the best possible. Lastly, has anyone provided a shred of credible evidence showing that schools hurt people? Or net worth or quality of life? I don't understand what's going on here. Thank you for your time and for your service to the community.
Joe, I haven't seen you in a while. You look great, man.
Thank you.
All right, see you later. Good.
Thank you.
I hate it when people get in shape and they look really good. It makes me feel bad. I feel bad, sorry. That's why I...
It is possible. See, it is possible.
So, I want to mock them when they come up somehow with compliments. Anyway, hello!
Good morning. For the record, Nicole Johnson, here on behalf of the Conservancy of Southwest Florida. And I want to talk about this rapidly emerging idea of placing the high school on the Pine Lake Preserve site. I heard there was an article in the Naples Daily News this morning. I personally haven't had a chance to read it yet, but I think it bears repeating at the city level that yesterday, at the Lee County Board of County Commissioners meeting, there was an agenda item to approve an interlocal agreement between the city and the county that would allow for hydrologic restoration of Pine Lake Preserve. The goal of this project was to allow water from the north to sheet-flow again across the property before going into the Keel Canal, or going into the Imperial River, and also to potentially take some water from the Keel Canal and send it into filter marshes on the Pine Lake Preserve site, essentially taking a giant step forward to getting the water right. And by the way, the city would be able to get TMDL credits for this. However, this agenda item was pulled by Commissioner Kiker because he said that there were a group of individuals that were thinking, considering, feeling that Pine Lake Preserve could be an appropriate future site for the high school, and therefore, they deferred this very, very important interlocal agreement. A couple of observations on this. First of all, Pine Lake Preserve is a Conservation 2020 parcel. Conservation 2020, as its name suggests, is a conservation, land acquisition, preservation, and restoration program. They acquire land with ecological value for conservation purposes only. Acquiring the Pine Lake Preserve in their management plan, they said, quote, "The 2020 program is there to conserve, protect, and restore Pine Lake Preserve to a productive, functional, and viable ecosystem." It also said, quote, "Implementation of stewardship activities will protect the site's plant communities and enhance habitat and foraging opportunities for wildlife while advancing the property's ability to recharge the groundwater aquifer." So, it would be a violation to the 2020 program to consider this or any 2020 site for a high school or other public building. It would set a very negative precedent, and I think really be detrimental, almost deadly, to the 2020 program. Secondly, the city and the community have been working very hard in the past several years to, again, get the water right. The Water Strategy Task Force submitted recommendations to you for improving water quality, water quantity, holding water back, getting the groundwater table to mimic more of its historic water levels. And in many cases, the task force identified public parcels, including Pine Lake Preserve, as essential for this. Out of those twenty-nine recommendations that council said they would consider pursuing, six of them specifically looked at public lands and Pine Lake Preserve as part of the solution. You also passed a resolution in the summer talking about moving forward with restoration of public lands, including Pine Lake Preserve. Pine Lake Preserve is important because of its location, adjacent to the Keel Canal, Southern Critical Crew, its proximity to the Jefferson Flowway, to the Imperial River. From the conservancy's perspective, this parcel, because of its location, because of the fact that it's essentially at the bottom of the bathtub for everything draining the Imperial watershed, this parcel is absolutely critical to getting the water right, restoring hydrology to the DRGR. I understand that citing a new high school has been difficult, and I certainly sympathize with the city and the community in this, but Pine Lake Preserve should not for a moment be considered appropriate for a new high school. At the end of this agenda item at Lee County Commission, they said that they were going to have the county reach out to the school board and to the city to get your opinion as to whether or not you wanted to investigate this site. The conservancy would ask that you not wait for someone to ask you, but you proactively let the county know that this is not an appropriate site, nor is any 2020 land appropriate for this type of intensification and use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning.
Just a point. I'm not aware of anyone who is saying, "Take the entire Pine Lake Preserve." The notion for consideration, thoughtful consideration, I don't think anyone's rushing to anything, is not anywhere near the Keel Canal, not anywhere near the Imperial River. Those are Management Units Two and Three. No one that I'm aware of, unless somebody else has talked to the school board or the county commission, has remotely suggested any of that be affected. I am aware that... I am aware that people have talked to the school board and the county commission about a swap of one part, the northern part, on Terry Street in exchange for, it's a like-kind exchange, for other property, the notion being that there would be no net loss to the 2020 program as a result of it. I think it's understandable that, because the facts have not gotten out there, that people think the entire Pine Lake Preserve is being suggested to be looked at. That is simply not the case. So, I would encourage you to do what the school board is doing and what the county is doing, which is thoughtfully look at this as a possibility. If you look at the management plan for Pine Lake Preserve, you will see that previously other swaps have been considered. Is this something that definitely should be done? That's unclear. That's unclear. I think what we need is a thoughtful look at this kind of stuff, so we can avoid what's happened on Tower Road, and we can avoid what's happened down in front of Hunter's Ridge. Let's everybody take a breath, step back, and thoughtfully consider stuff. So, that's my thought.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Yeah, I want to address, Fred Forbes for the record, I want to address some comments made earlier. The site that is affectionately known as in front of Hunter's Ridge, the main issues that were brought up, which has caused the Board of Education, their staff, to look at other opportunities as to where that school should go. Number one, the students that live within two miles of the school, that would have to walk in most cases, they're going to be forced to be going down Benita Beach Road, cross it, go across two sets of ramps, actually three, because the on-ramp, there's actually two different ramps coming together to get on. That's not a good location for kids texting, cell-phoning, and iPading. The accident rate of people being hit is going to go up. So that's number one. Number two, the school board was unaware of the huge traffic jams that occur on Benita Grandy because of workers going into two gated communities, not Hunter's Ridge, Quail West, Worthington. They queue up there in the morning, and it's about the time that the school buses would be coming in there, and when you put that traffic with what's there, they're going to spill out onto Benita Beach Road. Next thing is, the school board, the site selection committee, agreed with my professional opinion, as an architect and engineer, that there's inadequate parking on that site. Where are they going to go? There is no space for overflow. So, and there's no room to expand a high school on that site. So I think that that's what led the school board to look at other opportunities as to where this school should go. There isn't anybody east of I-7, well, I'm sure there's a handful, but everybody out there wants a high school. We want it to have a full service, athletic teams, and all that. And as I said in another public comment, our manager was a basketball coach for one high school. Our golf pro was a golf pro head, a coach for the Astero High School for years. Where did they come and practice and do their practice round? Hunter's Ridge at no cost. We've got teachers, schoolteachers, part-time teachers, all kind of people, and all three of those communities that contribute their time and effort to the school, and we're looking forward to where we can all adopt a classroom or something to help them out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
My name's Vinnie Palaio, business owner in the area. We own Enzo's Italian Restaurant, Benita Beach Road. Here basically to show some support for Benita Springs High School, and I decided to come out today, basically, to be the voice for all the busy working individuals in our industry. It seems that they sometimes may neglect that these type of meetings are very important to get themselves heard. The main reason why I'm here as well is to basically say that the restaurants, resorts, hotels, country clubs are all experiencing a major shortage of talented, skilled, you know, individuals for our industry. And I think, you know, the county has been issuing more and more business licenses in our area, and that's fine, but I think we failed to address the fact that we also need to counter that with, I guess, a prepped labor force to make sure that these businesses have the support they need, I guess, to be successful. So, I think by having a high school in our area, it will definitely improve the labor force, and I just, I wanted to make a comment about some programs that are out there, they're pilot programs that are available through the Florida Restaurant and Lodging Association and the National Restaurant Association. They have turnkey educational programs that counties like ours can use to basically implement into a high school to prep the students. So I want to make note of that and have you guys aware of those programs, because this would only, you know, improve things for our counties, so. And a couple of things I just, you know, I wanted to brush up on was the fact that I spoke to a couple individuals that work for us, and they have students that attend high schools in Astero and South Fort Myers, and they do, they wanted me to, I guess, address some of their concerns, because their students are having to travel to these further high schools, and it's causing their students to have to get up early, sometimes an hour earlier than they would if they had a high school here, and it's creating, you know, a brain drain for them, and so, and they're tending to be, I guess, emotionally drained from the commute. And I think if we had a high school in the area, you would probably see, you would probably see an improvement from the social aspect of these students as well, because they would have less of a commute, they'd probably be more socially engaged from, you know, as far as athletics and extracurriculum activities, so. Definitely here, as far as, you know, the capacity to show support for our industry and some concerned citizens of the area, so. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
For the record, Kathy McGrath. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend, be invited to attend the Chambers Roundtable the other day, and I listened to this gentleman and other business people and other young professionals, and yes, some of them were young professionals from Collier and Lee, and it was very interesting, because some of them, just as hertz, did not locate here because there's no high school. They did not. Some of them are newlyweds, some have young kids, four, six, and eight, some are pregnant. I hear all this, yes, "We want the high school here, but just don't put it in my backyard, please." That's the excuse. Now, let's go back. Tower Road is owned by the school board, and when that was mentioned, oh my gosh, it's in the DRGR, don't build it there. Well, isn't it ironic that now, now that they don't want it in their backyard, these same people are saying, "Put it in Pine Lake Preserve." That is unacceptable. That is wetlands. Even a little portion, you're not going to trade it. This is not a retirement committee. There are over 1,200 high school students here. And as Vinnie said, I heard this woman, her kids are bused, and you know what? Nowadays, it's not just friends that are split up that start at school, middle, elementary, and all, but siblings. One's bused to Astero, one's bused to North Fort Myers. I want to warn everybody, there is a very good possibility that if this opposition keeps up, we are not going to get a high school here. There are contingency plans already. They can enlarge Astero and bus the rest of them elsewhere. I think what I have emailed the school board is, they've done their due diligence for over a year. They had 11 sites. They eliminated them. They found one that met every one of their requirements, and that's the one in front of Hunter's Ridge. And what I said the other day at that meeting, and what I have told the school board, and I'm going to repeat now, you have to remember, I'm not a business owner. At my age, I'm not going to run for any political office. I don't have to be politically correct. I said to them, "Stiffen up your spine. You made the right decision. You looked, you found the place that met all of your requirements. Move forward. We can't have a delay looking for some other location. The clock is ticking. The deadline is there. And folks, if we don't do something now, and I don't mean just anywhere, they should build the school at the place that they have chosen. It is the proper location. I'm sorry. That is where it should go." And there's a lot of false information out there, and you know what I don't understand? I can understand Worthington and Hunter's Ridge being concerned, but Quail West? They're south. I think it's because they have the big bucks, and they're threatening this big lawsuit. They should move forward now. No delay. This is not the time now, after over a year of looking, this is not the time to look for another location. They found one that met all the requirements. So move forward with it. We can't shortchange our kids anymore. And what if it isn't built here? I mean, everyone's being politically correct and ambiguous. Oh, yeah, we want a high school here. But I'd like to see more people reach out and say, "Look, you found the right spot. Do it, and do it now." The other thing is, I wonder if the people at Hunter's Ridge in there realize what could be built on that parcel of land if not a school is there. And remember, folks, be careful what you wish for. You just might get it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward on any city item. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed with the remainder of the-
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, hey.
Could we have a quick discussion on high school? I mean, it's been brought up a number of times.
Did you want to have this during the city manager's report? Did you have something planned, a presentation or anything like that?
We were simply going to bring up what actually has already been brought up, which is the action that was taken by the county yesterday, and to determine whether or not the council had thoughts about this particular proposal. I will tell you that, and I've emailed this to you, the county manager has asked the question already of the city and the school board as to how they feel about this particular proposal. So, Counsel, if you would like to address it now, if you would like to wait till the city manager's report, it was just something we were going to bring up anyway. Your pleasure.
I'll check. Audrey, there's nothing, we've got plenty of time. There's nothing time-sensitive except for the 11 o'clock, right?
Right.
Okay, good. Let's have it now.
And I'm sorry, Carl, because I didn't see it on the agenda, or I wouldn't have-
It's not on the agenda, sir.
Well, I have a pretty fundamental question. It's been publicly announced that the city and the county have been having conversations about this particular site. Has someone on this council had conversations with county commissioners about this site? You have?
Yes.
And speaking on behalf of the city?
Not on behalf of the city.
They said publicly that the city and the county have been having conversations about this site.
You've heard the news and read newspapers before. Do they always report it 100% accurately?
I'm just asking if you're speaking on behalf-
Not once. Give me a break.
Well, my question, my question is really-
Go ahead.
This council has turned down an opportunity to monitor that we, the Water Task Force asked for, parts of the council have, and now today, we're talking about going back into the DRGR, which we've said wasn't appropriate when the school board had a piece of property in what was considered to be DRGR. So, if we're going to consider looking at other properties as a city council, I'd suggest to go back and look at the original property before we start messing with 2020 land, partly because it was clearly part of the Water Task Force position that that piece of property was going to be key to making the water right, getting the water right. So if we're going to continue down this path of trying to find different places, let's go back to the original site, take a look at that, and make sure that we understand what can be done out there and why we should consider that more. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to chime in on this subject? Bye, Mike.
Yeah, I mean, looking at this and from what I've heard so far, I'm very interested in this new site. I think it's a, looks like a great location as far as students being able to walk to school, being right on Terry. We could have a nice sidewalk system to get the kids within the two miles that have to get to school on their own, because the buses won't bring them there. And, you know, being right next to the Y, I think there'd be, you know, some good opportunities for cross-promotion there, you know, use of the athletic fields at the Y also, and then possibly if they do a charter high school, you know, there might be some camaraderie there between the two high schools. But from what I hear, that top section of the property that they're talking about is the dry portion of the land, and swapping it for the Tower Road site, you know, to me, it just makes sense. You know, I know, we want the high school here, you know, we want it now, but I mean, I don't think we should be trying to put a square peg in a round hole. I think we need to find the proper location, not just, you know, settle for something because, you know, we need it right now. I think we should take a little extra time to make sure something's done right, instead of, you know, just rushing into it.
Okay. Yeah, Peter.
Yeah, I guess I would say, too, I would agree. You know, we've looked at a few sites. There's been resistance. We're looking at this site now, or potentially looking at this site. I mean, everybody wants a high school. There's no two ways about that, but we need to get the location right. We've all heard the term "location, location, location." This is no different. This is absolutely no different. And when you look at the first site in the DRGR, there were concerns. You looked at the second site, Hunter's Ridge, there are concerns. Let's give people options. Let's look at this site potentially and see, and vet it out, have the process, and let's select a site, and let's move on. It's a very important decision. It's not anything, the clock is ticking, but it's nothing that needs to be rushed in haste and make the wrong choice. We need to make the right choice. You're looking at the future of this community. You're looking at 1,000 children, right? Where are they located? That should enter this equation. They don't need, this doesn't need to be on the far reaches of the city when the children are further west or in the center of the city. You know, there's been a lot of good points raised. How about children walking to school? If they're less than two miles, they're either going to have to walk or be brought by car. Let's think about that, you know, crossing under the highway and going to different spots. I mean, I think you need to look at some practicalities here of the children. Yes, we want to get them a high school, but do we want them walking two miles out to the far reaches of the eastern edge of town? Not so sure about that, but anyway, that's one person's opinion. So I'm in favor of looking at this site, looking at the pros, looking at the cons, and having a discussion, and you bet your bottom dollar I went up and talked to the people that I know at the county commission and the school board, because I want to get a location. And not for a second was I speaking on half of the city, so if that was reported in the news, well, let's make sure we're reporting that accurately, too. So, I say, let's look at this site. Maybe somebody misspoke on the news, but been very proactive in this process, as I know the mayor has, and others. Let's find a site, but let's find the right site. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet?
All righty. First off, as everyone knows, that conservation for me and that whole block of land from the Pine Lake Preserve and how it fits the pieces of the nature place and acquiring that other acreage there from the South Florida Water Management to take us all the way over so that we could finish Cullum's Trail is extremely important. And having sat through for the last eight years numerous meetings, discussions, and I've learned more about the DRGO, DR, and water hydrology, and geology, and conservation, and wetlands, and habitats than I ever thought sitting on council I will, because this has come up, the DRGRGR. Comes up all the time. And what is kind of astounding, as I sit here now, is that members of council were very strong about enforcing a moratorium so that we would never build in the DRGR, and now, all of a sudden, it's okay to do this. And I'm just concerned, because I don't understand how the process changes and how people's thoughts change overnight, but first, let me say, I want a school. Our children deserve a school. My granddaughters live here. I want this school built so that they can have and experience what team spirit is, and to have a whole community rally around their school and their colors and their mascots. It's so important. It's just, it's just the right thing to do. But, having said that, we, as a council, members were very strong about do not build in the DRGR, so the Tower Hill site went out, just, it was gone. It was not to be even considered, you know, for another second. Now, when I hear about the safety of children in walking and sidewalks, and we're talking about young adults, we're not talking about elementary school children, we're talking about older children that, you know, you hope know how to cross the street correctly or walk or drive their cars to school, that they can do it right, but I also still have to say that I have said many, many, many times that the sidewalks on East Terry Street- the sidewalks on East Terry Street have to be addressed. It is not a safe situation. Crossing over I-75 is not a safe situation. So there becomes more and more and more that has to be considered about every site that we look at. And I think at this point, it goes back to if we're going to look at Pine Lake Preserve, which I have been thoroughly convinced by sitting through all of the task force meetings that I attended and all of that information, that that is truly a viable and so alive piece of property. And it matters so much to the water retention and the water purification that we need to keep the Imperial River and our whole watershed safe, that that piece of property just is invaluable for that. So I would have to say that at this point, I think that if our council's going to change its mind and say that it's okay to build in the DRGR, that we need to start really looking back at the Tower Road Site because that one is a little bit more removed from that whole direction of where the sheet flow and the way that the hydrology works within the community. But I don't think that we should be discounting other sites either, that it all needs to be vetted. But I don't know that Pine Lake, I'm not convinced at this point that Pine Lake is the one to locate it on.
Thank you very much. Bill, did you have something?
Thank you, Ben. When we look at this, it's the school board's responsibility to come up with a site wherever they're operating, where they need more classrooms. And it's really their responsibility to give us, as the city of Bonita Springs, all the residents, the information approximately at the same time. Unfortunately, over the years that all of a sudden, we have a need for, you know, there's maybe, it's all based on school population, but it's very, 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 it's not an urgent thing that has to be done today. But the point is, is that the school board must communicate. The school board members have a responsibility to the people in Bonita Springs and every other city in this county. But they have a responsibility to us to bring all the people together in the same room in a reasonable manner and share their concerns. This helter-skelter approach that's been going on for months hasn't accomplished much except pulling the community apart, and it's not a good thing. And the school board has a responsibility to the people of Bonita Springs to look at all possible locations, and they have. However, they've never communicated, in my opinion, in a proper way to the citizens, why, when, where, and how. And until that is done, nothing will change. We will always have these circumstances. As far as the Pine Lake Reserve, you're absolutely right. The Pine Lake Reserve is part of the 2020 property, okay? And of course, even across the street where the old trailer park was, that is 2020 land also. And we're going to build, we were going to build, or somebody's going to build 240 condominiums there across the street.
It's DRGR, it's not 2020?
Excuse me, you're right. Thanks, Ben. But it was a, that was supposed to be 240 condominiums. Of course, we cleaned up the Mobile Home Park. It's gone, but nothing happened there. And then you've got the dias zones, 20 acres on the other side. So I think the school board should work very closely with the city of Bonita Springs and the citizens and bring everybody together and continue to work forward and not try to condemn, criticize, and complain about everything that goes on in this city. There's enough positive things going on in the city which I know about because I've been here for so long. And we have to work together with the school board, with the county commissioners, to solve the problem.
Thank you. Hey, this is a nice little circle. We've kind of painted ourselves into a corner hymn. We have, we have. We did this. We did this. You know, we have to take responsibility for it. And this is just me talking. But when you, when the school district, when they say, "Okay, fine, we'll build a high school in your community, and we're going to start looking, and we're going to look at our piece of property first," this council and a lot of the community was adamant that, "No, we do not want this in a DRGR. No way, no how." I think we were really, we, some of us, I wasn't, but you all were really clear about that. "No, not in a DRGR. No way, no how." I think that was abundantly clear. "Go look somewhere else." That was really the only other parameter that was put on it at that time. And we said, "Go follow, you know, your school district staff, go through your process, do that." And of course, people like myself were saying, "All right, it's going to get put next to somebody and they're going to hate it." That's true. It's just going to happen. So a lot of this is of our own making, I think. I think we put too many restrictions, you know, and this is hindsight, admittedly, but we put too many restrictions upon the school board so far as that site selection. And when you look at their site selection review, they even showed you, "Here's one that we looked at. We discounted it because it was DRGR. Here's another one we looked at. We discounted it because it was DRGR." And they would also mention a thing or two about it that they didn't like about it. But when it came right down to it, they were left with the site they were left at, not because they wanted to be mean or because they thought it was the best site in the world, but because of the parameters that we set. That's what they were left with. And so it should come as no surprise to any of us. Can't blame the school board, the school district staff. I can't. So here we are. All right? So now that everybody's all impassioned about it and they see this coming to a place where they really don't want it and it's going to be near them, and people are throwing logs on the fires, too much traffic, too much this, I get that. I understand human nature. I've been doing this long enough to where I understand how that works. But now, now that people are starting to look outside that area, what I think that we need to do, and I encouraged, and I did, after everybody had decided that this was some type of a site that we should look at, I was called by Larry Keiker and by Reggie Snell and said, "Hey, we want to look at this site. What do you think?" And I'm like, "You need," I said, "If I were you, I wouldn't do anything until you get the blessing of city council or not." Why in the world, I'm tired of us sending them on this wild goose chase of, "Go look for a site. Yeah, go someplace really good." And then, "Nope, not that one. Here's another one. Nope, not that one." We need to send them a signal. And the only thing that I would ask you to do, regardless of whether this site is appropriate, and I know looking down on the aerial, as Mike pointed out, you look down on the aerial photo, wow, it looks great. It's next to the YMCA. It's next to Terry Street. Looks perfect, right? There are probably some other things about it that they're probably wanting to discover. The 2020 part of it does disturb me. I think there are other ways to do this. However, I don't think we should preclude anything. We need to, we need to let, we need to let go of this. Obviously, you've let go of our predisposition about building in the DRGR on this site. We need to go ahead and say, "Is this the best site in the DRGR?" I mean, maybe there's a better site in there. If you're, and then they can, and if they can do that, and they can trade for that site for the other tower site, great. There's a site better than that. Let's send them a message. Please, let's send them a broader message that says, "You know what? After further thought about this and what we've been through, you know what? Go ahead and put your thinking caps on, but consider sites in the DRGR that may be more appropriate." I think we need to do that. And this isn't, "Oh, Ben Nelson wants to build in DRGR." No. I just think that we've, in the position we're in, is there a site that's not a 2020 site that we don't have to go through, a bunch of flip-flops, that may be a better site? Yeah. So if you're going to, if we're going to, we need to give them a message today, and it's either going to be, "Hell, no, we don't want you to look at that site nor any other DRGR site. Big deal, go ahead and build in a sterile." That's really going to be the message because they're prepared to put 600 more units. This is their plan. They've got it in effect. It will go in. 600 seats in a sterile, and the rest of the Bonitians can go wherever we can get them to go. So they're ready to do that. So we can either say, "Hell, no, no DRGR, including this 2020 site," or we can say, "Just look at this 2020 site." But if the wheels fall off that one, they're going to a sterile. That's what's going to happen. So I'm asking you, I'm begging you, if you're going to say, "Yeah, go ahead and look at this one," they should open it up and look and see if there are other DRGR sites that might be more appropriate, a leath pass to resistance that won't, that won't do anything else. Because if you're going to make it okay to build in DRGR there, you might as well open it up. There may be a better site that's not going to draw in, because you're going to draw in a bunch, people love 2020, and you're going to draw a lot of people to the party by doing that one. The DRGR, if we can send a message to the community that, for high school purposes only, only, we are okay with you citing a high school in a DRGR somewhere. What's your thoughts?
I'd like to go ahead and make that a motion, that we're going to open this up to that they could start looking at other DRGR sites that could be more appropriate.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
And not 2020 lands.
And make it clear that we're talking about high school sites only. So what's your thoughts on doing that?
For discussion, I think it should be treated kind of like annexation. It should be contiguous, you know, touching development that's already there, not just saying, "Okay." You know, because right now, we're looking at something that's on the fringe of the DRGR, close to a lot of residential, versus saying, "Hey, you know, you could put it anywhere you want. Like, you know, take over the mine, put it there. They'd have a nice, beautiful aquatic center." But I mean, that's kind of further in the DRGR, you know, much further to walk and, you know, more traffic having to get there. You know, I think it just kind of makes sense to be on the edge of the DRGR, like the previous property they were looking at before Hunter's Ridge was on the north side of Bonita Beach Road. And really, from what I heard, the only hiccup there was that one of the property owners was in bankruptcy. And they kind of discounted it because of that. They said it was going to take a little bit of time. But afterwards, somebody said, "Well, you could use eminent domain to speed up that process." So I mean, you know, there are other options out there, but I think that a lot of places got discounted for too small of a reason. But as far as the DRGR, you know, like I said, on the fringe of the DRGR, I think makes sense. You know, kind of just saying willy-nilly, "Yes, you can go to the furthest reach," you know, doesn't make so much sense.
And I don't think it would make sense to them either.
Right location, you know, is kind of the big deal.
I would agree. And I would perhaps, you know, perhaps across the street from this, like Bill mentioned.
And that'd be a possibility.
Perhaps across the street from there. If there's property across the street from there, holy moly, I think we're all going to have a big party. I mean, if we agree that that's okay because we get to restore our flowway, the 2020 remains intact, and we get a high school that's away from Hunter's Ridge, okay, maybe that's the win when everybody's looking at. I don't know. Again, I know I have this reputation of promoting the development of DRGR, so I don't want to spoil this by talking about it. But I think that it's important for us not to, one more time, hem ourselves into something that might not work. Let's open it up just a little more. And if you want to say that DRGR, it's okay for you to consider DRGR properties that are contiguous to other existing development that makes sense, I think that, or some other language like that, I got no problem with that because that makes sense. Obviously, you don't want to go out in the middle of nowhere. Nobody wants to do that. It's expensive to do that. The school board doesn't want to do that. They don't want to run miles of this or that.
Extra road, yeah.
Yeah, they don't want to do that. So any other thoughts?
Audrey, do you have?
I have two points I need to raise. And before you vote on this, I have a housekeeping which is pursuant to the city's administrative code. This is not an agenda item, so I need city council to make it a two-vote process. One is, is there good cause to have a discussion of this and to vote on something? And then, second, you can make your actual vote. And then the second thing I just wanted to point out is, when the YMCA was located, we did, we entered, there was actually, the YMCA entered into a settlement agreement with Sierra Club, and that's when we created the community facilities comp plan designation. So any school site that's the ultimate final site would probably be something you would redesignate to that community facility, which is the public use.
Understood. That's probably way down the road.
I'll make the motion that this issue is important enough that we...
First of all, let's officially retract your previous motion.
That was mine. I'll take it back.
Okay, okay. Now, carry on.
Second. I'll retract the second.
Yeah, she's just reviewed through the motion, so you go ahead and make yours. You don't, we don't need to vote.
I'll make the motion that this item is important enough to the city of Bonita Springs that we place this on today's agenda.
Because it's timely.
And have a timely motion.
I'm sorry. I didn't know the words. But thank you. That's what I meant.
There's a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay. Now, another motion.
I will restate my emotion that I would like to offer up that the city would welcome any investigation into contiguous DRGR lands for the purpose of a high school.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, for clarification.
That is the message we're going to send to the county commission and the school board. Yes.
Under the original motion, which I know is not on the floor right now, there was some discussion about avoiding 2020 land. Is that still a part of this or not?
I would like that to still be part of it.
Okay. The motion has it to where there's avoiding 2020 land. And do you, by avoiding that, do you want to make it to where it's not considered or it's okay to investigate?
I'm just saying avoiding. That's not saying no specifically, but it's just saying that that is not the priority to use 2020 land.
Okay. Why don't we make it clear that...
Can I be more specific then? Because there is other 2020 land that I know that is out there that might not be as important to our water. So in my original motion, I did say Pine Lake Preserve.
Yeah. I think that, and you can make the motion however you want to, but I think that as long as you make it clear that it's okay to investigate those, I actually think that, once you open this up, the school board wants to go leath pass of resistance. I think that they've shown that. That's kind of what we all are kind of wired. So if we open that latitude and you say, "Fine, go ahead and look at that," but if they're looking at other sites, they may find that there's a leath path of resistance that you all like on non-2020 properties. Let's face it, a DRGR site that meets the criteria that's non-2020, easier, easier for everyone, I think.
For discussion, I think we should be looking at everything, including that property as a possibility.
Yes.
Because their previous presentation that they made with all the properties, you know, that they discounted it for, it was too close to a railroad. They discounted it for this and that. I mean, all those things can be overcome. So I mean, I think we really need to look at everything holistically.
Okay.
And not really...
Would you mind keeping the language to where that it was possible to investigate that? That way, we're not giving carte blanche, you know, we're going to check off on it, but we're giving them carte blanche that it...
Right. I think that they know that from the discussion today that there is reservations about using...
That number one, developing a high school in the DRGR at the appropriate site, we have no objection to that. And then, we have no objection to the investigation of 2020 properties under that.
And it was contiguous DRGR property.
Because I think we need to just send them the appropriate message so there's no surprise down the way.
Right. And contiguous to other development?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. I would say preferably contiguous other development. I think that that's something they're going to look for.
I was going to say, and not to complicate, but I guess to complicate, you know, if we look at the old 41 site just south of the Charter School, they just discounted that because of the railroad track. You know, I mean, I think at every single site, you can say, "You can't do it there because of this." Well, we couldn't do it on the north side of Bonita Beach Road because a piece of that was in bankruptcy. Every single piece of property you're going to go to is going to have an objection. Where do we draw the line? It's time to find a site. So I don't know if that's in any kind of a form of a motion, but I would like to throw the old 41 site back in for review, despite the railroad tracks. I'd like to throw in the, across the street because of the, you know what I mean? We need to find a site, and everybody up here is committed to doing that. So I don't want to, you know, I don't want to couch this so that it gets spiraling out of control so that it really sends a mixed signal. I want to send the right signal to find a location, however we best do that, and however that's best worded.
Well, and first of all, what was brought before us was the consideration of 2020 property. So we were asked to do that. And so we're kind of trying to include some things into it. But none of those sites, we never said, "Don't look at any of those sites." They know, I think they know by, in first persons like yourself, you've got every right to go tell them, "I think you should go look at that again," or whatever. I think that they have the ability and the right to look at that. We haven't, we haven't, as a council, precluded any of that.
No, that's true. And we could add something to this particular request that they revisit sites that they've already looked at before and determine whether or not...
Or just put, as well as all other, as all other appropriately, you know, appropriate sites or whatever.
One other point on, and I, you know... One other point on, and I, you know, for the folks that don't know, and I'm not sure of the exact numbers, but it's worth mentioning, if there was some kind of a land swap that could be worked out here, on a cash-strapped Lee County School District, people should also realize, if there's a land swap here that can be worked out for this discussion, that's a savings of 10 to 14 million dollars. So I don't wanna be, that fact to be lost either.
Yeah, yeah, I thought it was interesting, when I started talking, or thinking about this, about, because I was trying to investigate myself, I'm like, well, how would they do that? Well, the county commission would have to actually change the entire 2020 ordinance that would give them the power to do what they wanted to do. And I thought, well, maybe it would, maybe it would be better, and of course, I think that the argument that it does, if you change the ordinance to where you can, the county commission can just go ahead and trade properties, it, all of a sudden, those properties aren't preserved properties anymore, they're, really, all the 2020 properties aren't really protected. So I thought, well, maybe it would be better for the county commission to consider changing the ordinance to where they allow them to use the 2020 money, which they have 2020 money, to buy a parcel, like if they found another parcel, they could buy that parcel and then trade that parcel, it would be a non-2020 property, and then they could trade that property for the Tower Road site, and then, yay, then we didn't use an actual piece of 2020, we just created a piece, instead of doing that trade for one. So I think by giving them the latitude to look at that, I think they'll figure out that business thing, and still do a swap.
And may I make a suggestion, if we pass the motion to do what you're talking about, that we have a joint meeting with the school board, with all of us there, with them, and have an open discussion about what they've come up with after they've made the decision to a particular site, so everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, okay, well, we can do that, once we get this motion out of the way, we'll go ahead and talk briefly about that, about, once they come down with the site, us having, come down with a potential site.
Right of everybody.
Us having a meeting together, okay. We're pretty much telling them that we're not, we're not gonna toss anything out there, we want them to, we want to open up the DRGR sites that are contiguous to development into the, that makes sense, according to their parameters, and including the 2020 site, take a look at that one, along with the, and the county needs to have this message too, and plus, the other sites that have been under consideration, take another look at them.
And was the wording "preferably contiguous to development"?
I think that's fair to, I would think that's fair to say.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's fair to say.
And we were, we'll be happy to draft this for the mayor's signature, is that direction from council?
I think they need it pretty quick, I mean, especially if the school board voted on this unanimously, they said, be fine, and the Lee County Commission funded it, fine, just in reference to this site. I think you're gonna be take, I think that the school district staff's gonna read like, oh, great, that's, we've got something to work with now.
But have the mayor sign the letter?
Would that be okay?
The communication?
Oh, I like to discuss this word "preferably contiguous to." That's pretty open-ended. So if they say, oh, that site's not gonna work, let's go to the eastern reaches of the city.
Not from me, I was just repeating back what I heard to make sure that...
Well, if you don't put "preferably," then if it's, if it's not contiguous, and it's separated by a lot, and it's the preferable site, you can't consider it.
Wearing my lawyer hat.
You're keeping them from considering good lots, so...
That's what I was considering, wearing the lawyer hat, they might look at that word, and someone might say...
Exactly, the lawyers live by words here. Okay, I think we're close on this, are we gonna be okay with this? And let's face it, I mean, if it's something we all hate, we'll be back here again. All right, we're okay, got a motion, a second? All right, count, you good, you good, Carl? And this'll be something I can sign and send to them as quickly as possible, so we can put them back to work, so we don't end up busing our kids all over the place. Roll call.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Well, that was an easy one, look at that, piece of cake, that's, this job's a cinch. Anyway.
What about the joint meeting?
Oh, the joint meeting, if you, if you wanna go ahead, and I don't know if we need to put that into form of motion, we can just talk to staff, and just, Bill, what you were saying is that if they find a preferred site, or if they find a potential site next time, you want to have that meeting right away, is that what it is?
What I'm saying is, they may bring us multiple sites, and I think we should have a meeting before that decision is made, and when they've picked out, because we need to have the input of all the council people in that discussion.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, yeah, I think that's a good idea, yeah, we're all good with that, that's a head nod, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Get us involved.
And if that involves county commissioners too, right?
Yeah, include the whole, well, yeah.
Whoever we need.
The school board will make the final decision, not the county.
Yeah, we just want their money.
But if there was a land swap, I'm just, you know, fuck.
Anyway, go ahead.
Just for clarification, so you anticipate this meeting to occur when they think they have settled on a site, or during the discussion of...
Of the site.
Down to a multiple sites, but narrowed down.
That's correct.
Before the final decision, gotcha.
Not just one place.
Understood, yeah, yeah, okay, we're all good, okay, we can move on. Audrey, I think you're up for this first reading here.
I am, this is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapters Three Development Standards, and also Chapter Four Zoning, amended Section 3-491 related to site design standards, amending Sections 4-408, 4-661, 4-718, 4-740, 4-1098, 4-1122, 4-1465, 4-1467, 4-1472, 4-1473, and 4-2072, reading Sections 4-888 through 4-895, the US-41 Overlay District, providing for purpose and intent, applicability, definitions, permitted use, specific site design standards for the US-41 Overlay District, parking and circulation, intersection design and corner lots, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion code and an effective date. This is a first reading of a land use ordinance, it was advertised in the Fort Myers News Press, I do have the affidavit of publication, which is, the original's on file with the clerk, and it is legally sufficient. The ordinance also did go to the local planning agency on November, I'm sorry, on November 12th, and Ms. Alexis Crespo will give you those changes, as well as provide you with additional presentation above what you saw on November 4th.
Okay. Hey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Alexis Crespo, representing staff. As Audrey said, I gave you a kind of a high-level presentation at permission to advertise on the 4th, and the intent today was to walk you through the proposed ordinance, the changes we're proposing to enhance US-41, not intending to go line by line, and I'd also like to note that while it is 103-page ordinance, approximately 70, 80% of that are sections that are not being changed, we just have to include the entire section where any small change is being made, so there's a lot in there that is not being touched. So, the intent of what we're proposing is to have unique and enhanced standards for your US-41 corridor, as Mr. Farrar noted, this is a very important gateway into the city from both Naples and Estero, you have corridor overlays for your Benita Beach Road corridor, as well as Old 41, and we certainly saw this as an important area to address for enhanced standards. In many cases, we're still relying on the code minimum Lee County buffering and design standards that have been in place since the City Incorporated, and so, we're looking to incorporate some higher standards to mirror what had been done in adjacent communities, and again, just bring up the standard of that roadway. We did learn a lot through previous amendments we've done with this board and council, such as Big Box, where we need to find balance, and we've really sought to do that through this amendment, where if you're a minor redevelopment project, we're not tagging you with a lot of additional enhancements, you're gonna have a minor set of enhancements, but if you're doing a brand-new development on a new site, then we're gonna incorporate more of those enhanced standards, so we did look to do that through this presentation. So we showed you some opportunities, some sites that are ripe for redevelopment, that we would look to have, meet some of these standards we're proposing. We've got great examples of the style of development we're looking to achieve through these standards, and then lastly, we have a number of large sites available for development that we'd like to make sure, again, meet these high standards that we see in some of the other communities. So I'm gonna walk through the highlights of the ordinance, I've got the page number on each slide, if you wanna refer to that as we go, I didn't insert verbatim the language being discussed. And the first change in Section 3 is very minor, it's really just to create consistency with Chapter 4, this is regarding your drive-through lanes, we wanted to make it clear that it's not just fast food drive-through lanes we're concerned about, it's dry cleaning fast, or drive-through lanes, and all the different uses that have drive-through facilities, we want those to be screened on the side and rear of the buildings, and where they can't be screened, enhanced buffers should be provided to protect the view from the roadway. Moving into the bulk of this document, are your use groups from Chapter 4-408, that starts on page 41, I believe goes into page 80-plus of this document. We are not changing the use groups, with the exception of used merchandise, we're not proposing wholesale changes to your use groups. We had lengthy discussion on this at the LPA, where they were concerned, we were moving around Group 1 and 2 and different uses throughout the code, that's not being proposed here. What we're doing through this amendment is simply to create a new group to address pawn shops. Currently, pawn shops are in your lowest intensity grouping under used merchandise, and we felt, because of the way that pawn shops operate, their hours of operation, and their somewhat heavy reliance on the short-term loan function of what they do, that they really needed to be treated differently than your typical Group 1 retail used merchandise stores. And this is not unique, what we're proposing, it has been done in jurisdictions across the country and state as well, so, again, the only changes to use group would be to create a Group 5 to address pawn shops. No other changes are being proposed. The next big bulk of this document are the use regulation tables. You may recall, last year, there was a zoning in progress completed by your staff, that said, along US-41, within 100 feet of that right-of-way, certain uses needed to be either special exception or planned development if larger than one acre. Through this amendment, we are taking that 100-foot and creating a real corridor boundary, and so, we are proposing to change that note, to make it address the corridor we are proposing, and we are also proposing that the uses go through the special exception process, which I'll touch on in detail a little bit later. You've had projects come through that were targeted intensive uses, such as car washes, they've come through under these new standards and gone through the PD process, and we feel that by proposing the special exception, we can give you more specific review criteria in which to analyze these cases. Plan developments are pretty broad and open, you don't have to justify some of the reductions to code requirements the same way, so we're proposing that all those intensive uses you looked at through your zoning in progress be addressed through the special exception review process, which of course, does go to council. We've also targeted a fairly small list of what will be prohibited uses on your US-41 corridor, should you adopt this ordinance. That would be what Mr. Farrar referenced, slaughterhouses, fertilizer, production plants, there's a number of uses permitted currently on certain sites that we feel should be phased out over time, to the extent possible. So you'll note that. Okay, getting into the meat of the ordinance, starts on 85, I'm gonna pass out the map. I've got it on the slide, but it's gonna be easier to see. Okay, thank you, sure, okay, thank you. So we are creating a US-41 Overlay District map, you have an existing map for your Benita Beach Road corridor, you have a map for old US-41, so we would propose to set the boundary on a map and not rely on the 100-foot rule measured from the right-of-way. And we will, we wanted to show it to you at this scale, so you could see the individual parcels as you walk, the first, it starts with the northernmost section of US-41, and then each page you're going further south on the corridor. And the intent would be, once council reviews this, we would create an overall exhibit of the corridor, but we did want you to see how this impacts individual parcels. And the intent here was to get your commercially-zoned and your industrials-zoned properties along the US-41 corridor that have visibility from the corridor, and certainly, development on those properties would impact views along the roadway. We did not want to include built-out residential communities, such as Benita Bay, Cedar Creek, it really didn't make sense to include them in the overlay, and you'll notice that they have been exempted from that. So I'll put this up for folks in the audience, again, it's picking up basically the first parcels that have frontage on US-41 and carry down through the map. And again, we also picked up, in addition to commercial industrial community facilities, in order to be fair to those types of uses, in case they should redevelop in the future. Would you like to discuss a certain map?
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Yeah, no, sir.
Oh, thank you. On this first map, that's number nine in the big picture?
Yes.
Okay, see the portion of the strike lane that comes out, that's dark purple, down there toward the southern end of that block, yeah, right there, up one, yeah, is that, when it talks about dark purple industrial, and that's an IPD CPL, what does that include?
I believe that is Burnwood, the Burnwood Center.
Yeah, but what kind of, what kind of industrial does that include?
That would be in the schedule of uses attached to the planned development ordinance, which I don't have with me, but I, but in review, we did review this site in detail during the social service update we did, it has a very broad schedule of uses.
Can you point out the railroad track, because that gives me a perspective? Okay, and crosses 41 where?
I'm not, I'm not...
Well, if it crosses in that area, you've already got some heavy industrial, you've got a concrete plant in there, is that about the right area, I'm just trying to get, figure out where this is.
Yes, sir.
The railroad tracks more like the green further to the right.
Yeah, I'll ask you, I'll ask you after a while, we're not gonna decide on this today anyway, but that's fine, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we had discussed...
This is Lansdowne and the Burnwood developed more commercial retail area in the dark, in the CPD up front.
Right, well, there's a church right in there, and we'll talk about it afterwards, but there's a church, I wanted to make sure we didn't have heavy, kind of heavy industrial sitting right beside a church, is all I was concerned about, thank you.
So as we move south onto map 18, we've taken out both Benita Bay and Cedar Creek, and then as you move further south, again, just picking up the east side of US-41, as opposed to the Benita Bay development. Map, I believe 27, is, that's getting towards your Benita Beach Road intersection, so we wanted to include, obviously, the commercial uses around that intersection, we also, in discussions with staff, elected to include the blue area, which is the city's parkland. And then lastly, as you move south to the Collier County city limit, we have, again, the commercial and CPD zoning districts that front along US-41. Would you like to discuss further the mapping, I know you're seeing this for the first time? Or move on through the wording?
May I just ask you, have there been any, is this what was existing, and you've left it like this, this is just what it is, or these are proposed changes to something else?
The green boundary would be the proposed boundary for the corridor.
Right, but the actual, these are existing uses that you show in there right now.
This is the existing zoning map.
Want everybody to know that, that's what it is now.
That's what it is now.
That helps, thank you.
And they would, and if they are within the limits of that green boundary, they would be subject to the US-41 standards, should they redevelop.
Purpose of this is, you just want everybody to know who's gonna be affected, and where the uses may change, and what, and so that council can see what's allowed in there now.
Correct.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
And if, I guess, and we'll get into this further, but if you are now a prohibited use, but you're fully operational and have been under your current zoning, this ordinance will not shut that business down, it would simply have to stay active and could not go out of use for more than six months, and then, in order to become non-conforming. So this wouldn't impact existing built businesses that are more intensive and targeted through this.
All right, carry on.
All right, getting into how we're applying this to existing and future development, we have created a framework where certain projects will be deemed as minor, mostly redevelopment projects. We certainly don't want to hit minor redevelopment projects with a whole slew of new and potentially costly enhanced design standards. So, we wanted to establish what would be minor and have a minimal list of things that they would need to do to be in compliance. So, what we are proposing to be minor developments are those that undergo limited review development order processes for expanded building footprint. Building expansions, more than fifteen percent but less than fifty percent of existing square footage. So, if you're expanding your building by ten percent to have some additional storage in the back, you're not going to trigger any of these requirements. Once you hit the fifteen percent threshold, that's where you'd have to come into compliance with the minor standards we're proposing. And then, we also wanted to, as we did for Big Box, address incremental improvements over a five-year timeframe equal to fifteen percent but less than fifty percent of the square footage, so that people wouldn't slowly add on and try to not trigger the additional requirements and try to work around these provisions. So, that would be minor, and we'll discuss as we get into the document what's applicable to those developments. Major developments would be anything requiring a full development order, so that'd be your new vacant sites that come in for development. Building expansions of more than fifty percent of existing square footage, and then incremental improvements of fifty percent over a period of five years would be major. A large point of discussion was how to treat your existing plan developments on the US Forty-One corridor. There are many, as you'll note, on the zoning maps provided. We are proposing to handle existing PDs similar to how we handled them through Big Box, which is if the use is permitted through a development order and it's built, you're vested, you can continue on, just don't discontinue that use for a period of time, six months or greater. However, if you're a PD, you've never gotten a DO for that specific use such as fertilizer production plant, you would not be vested for that use any further, and you would have to be complying with the use regulations proposed. So, we're triggering the DO approval as vesting in this case and not simply having a schedule of uses that may be ten to twenty years old that have never been acted upon by the owner. So, that was a discussion point at LPA, and again, that's how we did address big boxes to address the older PDs that did not act upon the uses.
I'm sorry to keep laboring this, but this, going back to the previous one, we were explaining the difference between if they're expanding. I get the expanding, if you're expanding by a certain percentage, expanding. But then, you mentioned improvements. If you're going to do incremental improvements that are more than fifteen percent, it doesn't look like an expansion. Does that mean if, how do you define improvements?
And that was another point at LPA where we need to clarify that, which tied to building expansion as well.
By paint the building, is that an improvement?
That we're proposing it would be expansion only.
Expansion only.
Expansion, so we do need to.
You need to add that in there, because if they're not expanding, they're not, it doesn't apply, right?
Correct. Audrey and I are meeting after this to kind of go through some of those wordsmithing items.
Yes, Pete.
General question. What are you getting for feedback, or what have you heard so far? I guess, more specifically, what would business owner X, Y, or Z have to say to this? And what would private citizen of Benita Springs X, Y, and Z have to say to this?
I have not gotten feedback.
You haven't?
We didn't have any public comment at LPA. We did have folks in the audience representing the development community, and they didn't comment on it.
Any specific comments to specific parcels?
Not to my knowledge.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay, I'm just curious. Okay, great. Thanks.
Good morning. Arlene Hunter, Director of Development Services. The staff has been working with Alexis for a long period of time. We actually had received direction from council to work on this almost over a year ago. So, we've brought up updates continually to both the Government Affairs Committee that we were working on drafting these ordinances, as well as the Economic Development Council. We've stressed to them that we would be looking at stronger design standards and use patterns throughout that process. Specifically, what we're looking at is Lee County zoning or uses that were provided in PUDs that are probably a little bit more intense than what we want to see on US Forty-One currently. And these uses are currently allowed in these PUDs unless we provide this overlay district for those. And these are people who have not acted on those uses as of time. So, they're twenty, thirty years old, receiving Lee County approvals, but they've never taken the next step to apply for a building permit or LDO for those more intense uses. But we have been providing regular updates through the Government Affairs Committee of the chamber, as well as the Economic Development Council.
Good. Go ahead.
The uses requiring special exception that we're proposing mirror what you approved through the zoning in progress in 2014. So, I've listed those, they're on page eighty-seven. They are the more auto-oriented uses such as auto parts stores, service, stations, and repair, as well as dealerships, boat sales, and storage, equipment and vehicle dealers, things that have a lot of outdoor and open storage associated with them. The uses that can really impact the views along the roadway and also just generally of a more intensive and could be more appropriately located throughout the city. Mobile home dealers, nightclubs, et cetera. So, we utilize the same set of uses you looked at through your zoning in progress and simply applied the special exception process and removed the requirement to do a plan development, which I believe the feedback on that is generally, special exceptions is a shorter review process, but we can apply specific approval and review criteria that council can use to guide their decision-making in order to ensure it's appropriate for this corridor.
I just have a question about the repair shops. Is that auto repair shops, or would that affect like a shoe repair or a golf club repair shop that would wind up in a strip mall?
I believe due to space on the slide, I dropped the grouping. It is the Group Four M motor vehicles and motorcycles, et cetera, not your more sundry and goods-type repair. Now, on page eighty-eight, we have created a fairly limited use of prohibited uses that you would not want on your gateway corridor to the city, in our professional opinion. And that's your really intensive industrial-type uses. Warehousing, fish houses, cargo handling, things that would be more like.
I'm sorry, what's a fish house?
A fish house, I believe, is where they.
Is that where fish live?
Fish, processing fish and getting it out for distribution.
Okay. Probably ought to say that, I don't know, for simple people like me. Fish processing.
I'll note that gasoline dispensing systems, that's not a gas station. That is specialized fuel and fleet dispensing systems. And so, that would be as a principal use prohibited, but if there was a use allowed that this was ancillary to, that would still be allowed.
Fire stations.
Correct. Thank you, Audrey. Manufacturing, that covers the slaughterhouses and the food processing and a lot of those intensive uses you wouldn't want to see. And then, recycling facilities, which is for all intents and purposes, like a junkyard, would not want on your US Forty-One corridor. And then, lastly, I'll note, used merchandise Group Five, which is your pond shops. Preventing further proliferation of that use along the corridor.
Well, just, I'm sorry.
No, no, this is what we're here for.
Well, would this mean what Royal Scoop wanted to do? Would that be considered processing?
We actually tailored the language to ensure that would not be an issue.
Okay, because I think that's kind of, I mean, if somebody wants to put a doughnut shop, a factory there that makes doughnuts, and then they sell retail with it.
Right. Krispy Kreme could still locate on Forty-One.
The day that you send that one away, we're coming after you.
Right.
Anyway, okay, go ahead.
On page eighty-eight is where we get into the standards we're proposing to enhance US Forty-One. We have done another menu approach where it's not one size of its all. You can pick and choose based upon your specific site what makes the most sense. We've proposed an amenity zone closest to the roadway, where if you have a stormwater management pond, you'd be required to do a fountain as one of your options. Enhanced littoral plantings, which is the herbaceous plantings along the lake edge, which can make for much more pleasing views of the lake feature and is also just better from an ecological standpoint. Or the option to place an architectural feature within that area, which could be a bench-and-gazebo type item. We are also proposing an enhanced right-of-way buffer requirement. We're proposing to increase the width of the right-of-way buffer on US Forty-One from fifteen feet, which is the Lee County inherited minimum, up to twenty feet, to make you consistent with your neighboring jurisdictions immediately north and immediately south in Collier. So, we would, you'd want to have a consistent buffer so that you don't notice that as you enter into the city of Benita Springs. We've also proposed clustering of plant materials and slightly larger species at the time of planting in order to, again, enhance the view. And so, here are just some examples of how these can be met. Again, the menu option where you don't have to do it all, you can choose what works for your site, but fountains, enhanced littoral plantings. And here's a good view of the Collier County twenty-foot-wide clustered right-of-way buffer. And this is one version, because you can use, obviously, different types of shrubs and Section four eight-nine-four is regarding parking and screening of parking lots, and we're proposing that you can develop with one double row of parking between US Forty-One and your business. Or, if you want to do more parking and do all your parking in front of your building, you'd have to do an enhanced twenty-five-foot buffer. Again, this is building upon what communities to your north and south have done. Also, requiring vehicle interconnections where possible. We've provided some very flexible language where it's, if it's simply not possible to create interconnections between the sites, we understand that and have provided the flexibility in the language. We have also requested pedestrian interconnections, both internal and external, to the development. LPAs, what is a double row of parking? So, this is an example of the Burnwood Center right by my office near Benita Grand and Benita Beach Road. And this is what could be accommodated without having to do any buffer enhancements, which is two rows of parking with the drive aisle in between. So, that's the maximum condition we're proposing without triggering additional buffer requirements. Page ninety through ninety-four is discussing the intersection standards we've created for those properties located at your major intersections to help create a better sense of place. And again, we have created a menu of options depending on how the site lays out and the developer's interest in that site. But the first option would be to place the building so it's emphasized from the street, as this example in Naples is shown. We've incorporated some figures into the ordinance to help guide the development community on how to meet the standards. This is the figure demonstrating that principal building, again, oriented towards the US Forty-One frontage. And that's not always possible, especially, and this would not apply to minor redevelopment projects. They are not going to have to move buildings around or create features at their corners. This is what's triggered by major new redevelopment, or major new development, rather. The second option is an accessory structure. This might be much more affordable for the developer should they not want to locate their building at that, along the intersection frontage. And this is an example from Amokli in US Forty-One in Naples as well, where they've done just a simple trellis-type feature at the frontage to create some visual appeal at that intersection. And that is the figure for that one. And then, lastly, is the hardscape option, where you can do some pavers, potentially a fountain. It can be a signage feature, bell tower, different type of structure to have a third option should you not want to place your building there or do an accessory structure. Now, the next couple of slides, and we're almost through the, actually, the entire ordinance at this point, these are going to apply citywide. So, we're moving out of just US Forty-One and dealing with some intensive items that really need to be addressed holistically across the city. We needed to tweak your Chapter Four standards for a drive-through and auto service station. We're proposing just some language to make it consistent with Chapter Three, again, orienting your drive-through facilities away from the right-of-way to avoid a scenario where your queuing lanes are visible from US Forty-One. We are also proposing an enhanced buffer standard for auto service stations. This involves a berm and additional plantings. This is consistent with what Collier County has recently passed to help screen gas station facilities coming online, because as you probably have noticed, they're getting larger and larger. And so, that's where market demand is driving that use, but we need to do a better job of screening when you have twenty-four fuel pumps right up on the roadway. And we've got some pictures of that. So, the enhanced buffer standard we're proposing is slightly wider width, a berm to elevate the level of the plantings to better screen the cars and the fuel pumps, and that's a newer racetrack in Fort Myers. We made a couple changes, or proposing a couple of changes to your fencing section to better clarify that barbed wire fencing is prohibited except for agricultural operations and where needed for safety reasons to enclose high-voltage transformers. We're also proposing a maximum wall height of six feet along US Forty-One, except where a taller wall is appropriate to screen residential communities from commercial uses. And then, lastly, we have a housekeeping change, also, Section, or Chapter Four, Section Four, fourteen-seventy-two. This is to implement a turnaround in front of gated communities. It's something that hasn't been included in the code yet. And what happens is, large delivery trucks and sometimes emergency vehicles will try to get into a gated community, realize they're in the wrong place, and there's not sufficient turn radius for those larger vehicles to get out easily. And certainly, in the case of an emergency vehicle, they need to be able to do so. So, we've added language similar to what Lee County has done recently to ensure that those are designed to accommodate those larger vehicles. And then, a cross-reference regarding outdoor display on US Forty-One and old US Forty-One in order to limit the amount of outdoor display and prohibit outdoor storage along those Lastly, again, I think I've said lastly three times, and this really is my last slide, though. At the local planning agency, we had lengthy discussion. They, I think, were under the thought that we were changing the use groups, but really are only proposing to change the pond shop use into Group Five. So, that was the bulk of the discussion that day. They were also concerned about vesting of uses in plan developments. As Arlene very clearly set forth, there's old PDs that were approved by Lee County that have very intensive uses that have not been built and that we'd like to be able to review through the special exception process if they have not had a development order approved yet. So, we are proposing to maintain that standard in this amendment. And they also want to make sure that if you're a minor project, you're doing minor changes, that you're not tagged with doing major structural changes on-site and enhancements that would be cost-prohibited for the redevelopment process. So, we certainly believe that this document is doing that and proposes minimum enhancements for those smaller projects. So, with that, happy to answer any questions and look forward to you coming back for second reading on December the third, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very much. Arlene?
I have a clarification for Councilwoman McIntosh's question. If we can go back to the map, I can answer your question for you.
One more. There you go.
So, what I wanted to point out is, I think you're referring to Gospel Baptist Church.
Right.
This is Quality Court right here. So, within the agricultural lands, that is where Gospel Baptist Church is located. Global Tech is right about there. So, this is the Burnwood piece, and if you go along here, this is Old Forty-One going this way.
Okay, thanks.
So, they're on this side of the road. So, this is light industrial, and this is where the heavy industrial.
Okay, thanks.
Now, while we're, got this map up here, this probably has nothing to do with this process, but then again, it may. Quite some time ago, we carved out a potential right-of-way or potential path for sandy lane extension. I don't know if it's appropriate to include those on these maps, but the reason that we did that at the time was we wanted to let people know as they were developing and as time went by that if and when the road gets built, that's where it was going to get built at. So, I don't know, just for the staff level, I don't expect an answer now. That may be something you may want to put on there, because that is the connection that we were supposed to put between, yeah, between Estero and between Benita, right there, connecting to Old Forty-One up to there. So, it may be important for people like Global Tech and other people to know that that's a distinct possibility. I don't want them to be surprised. So, I don't know how we do that, but.
We can add that to the.
Yeah.
All right, good. All right, good. Council, why don't we go ahead and get public comment first, and then we'll go ahead and have a conversation, okay? Anyone wishing to speak at this, please come forward to this item only. Seeing them, we'll go and close public. Seeing none, we'll go and close public comment. Council, what's your pleasure? What would you like to do? Would you like to send this to the second part of this?
Send this to second reading.
Second.
We have motion second, send a second reading. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Alexis, good job. Good job. All right, we are not 11 o'clock yet, so let's go ahead and skip on down the way if you want to. Do you want to go to the second readings?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have some second readings. The first is an ordinance amending Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 42, Article 3, Water Conservation, to adopt appendix C, gray water recycling systems of the plumbing portion of the Florida Building Code, to require new car washes to implement best management practices, to establish ornamental water fountain and water feature standards, and to encourage alternative water reuse technologies, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion code, and effective date. This is the first reading of, I'm sorry, this is the second reading of the ordinance. It has been advertised legally sufficient. A copy of the affidavit of publication showing the advertisement is with the city clerk. At this time, Jennifer DeFaullo-Hagan will provide a presentation.
Hi, Jen.
Hi.
Or any questions?
Questions?
Yeah, we had a presentation. Yeah. Anyway, just a quick synopsis of why you're here. Just go ahead, go ahead. You can do that.
Very quickly, we're here to amend our water cons, our water ordinance regarding water conservation to updates to be reflected to Florida statutes to make sure that we're on par.
There you go. Any questions from council? No? At this time, let's go ahead and have public comment. We'll have you back up if we have any questions. Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come forward.
I'm worried about mosquitoes. This just turns to hold, when we're standing water, whether it's gray or clean, how do we keep the mosquitoes from living in it? Thank you.
Okay. Any, any other comment? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And council, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
There's a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm glad, I think Jim would be glad to talk to you about your question right there, okay? Thank you very much. Let's see, we are still not 11 o'clock. Let's go ahead and carry on down the line.
Thank you. This is an ordinance author, authorizing Lee County to levy special assessments within beneath city boundaries for municipal solid waste disposal pursuant to Section 125.01 1Q Florida statutes, providing for conflicts of law, severability, scrivener's errors, and effective date. This is the second reading. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient. We have Pamela Keys, the Utilities Director for Lee County, in the audience if you have any questions as to it. And I think I've explained it previously.
Okay. And there is public comment on all of these items.
Yes, sir.
Now, any member of the public wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. Seeing none, council, what's your pleasure? Do you have any questions, or would you like to go ahead and approve this? Anyone?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Two, three, we only have three votes. So...
I would, council, if I may, maybe explain the ordinance a little more? Would that help? For Ms. Keys?
Perhaps.
For council to maybe consider reconsideration?
Well, why don't we do this? I would go ahead and ask, that's right.
There you go.
I would ask the, the people who voted, Peter, what's your objection to it?
Special assessment?
Yes, currently you have a special assessment. There's been a special assessment for 15 years for Benita Springs for garbage. As a matter of, this is what we call a housekeeping ordinance. Lee County never went through the ordinance requirement, which was, there's a requirement in state law in the county section, not in the city section, that if you're going to set up a special assessment in a city, you need to get the city to adopt an ordinance. While we entered into interlocal agreement saying that we would always be welcoming the assessment because we want them to pick up our garbage, we never adopted the ordinance, and they provided us a copy of the ordinance as a housekeeping item. Otherwise, if you don't want your solid waste picked up by Lee County and changed the flow control, we can do that, too.
Mr. Mayor, if I might clarify, too, that basically, right now, we're paying for our solid waste through a collection from Lee County on the tax bill, and this simply allows that to continue.
Yeah. So in other words...
No change, and there's no additional money involved in this particular action.
You don't want your garbage picked up anymore. Vote against this.
Right. That's, if you want us to control our garbage, we can do that, but it would change dramatically.
Okay. With that in mind, would...
And knowing that there's no increase, right?
There was an increase.
No, this isn't about an increase. This is about paperwork. Would anyone like to reconsider their vote?
Sure.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion? Would you like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Is there a second? Motion and a second. And this is on item B. Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Ah, there you go. Now, all your garbage gets picked up. All right. Items, item C.
Thank you. This is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4, Zoning, relating to administrative setback variances and nonconformities created by eminent domain proceedings, amending Sections 4-254 and 4-2325, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion code, and effective date. This is a second reading. It is a public hearing. I can answer any questions if you would like to. I think we've explained this previously.
Just, just in a nutshell, what we're doing, this is good for the people that, that if there's an eminent domain, we actually hold them harmless, you know, for setbacks and all kinds of things, right?
Correct. It's basically setting it up so that there is no flex, so that staff has to process the administratively, the changes, so it's reflected. So if the property changes hands, that eminent domain action is taken into consideration. A main reason of taking care of this is it would be considered otherwise a benefit during eminent domain proceedings, where then people, attorneys, would be able to say, hey, it's not definite that we could have it, so therefore, I'm entitled to compensation. So it's trying to reduce city paying legal fees to outside interest, not to the property owner, it's to the lawyers.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Audrey? And this is second reading. Any member of the public wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. Seeing none, council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? There's a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay. And item D.
Item D is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending a portion of the Administrative Regulations Guide and the Personnel Policies Ordinance, amending Section 7.02 relating to the Compensation Pay Plan, Providing for Severability, Conflicts of Law, Scrivener's Errors, and Effective Date. This is a second reading. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient and on file with the clerk's office. Meg Weiss can provide you with any background as to this particular ordinance if you have any questions.
Okay. And, hi.
Hi.
Anything, anything new? Nope, that's it.
From last meeting.
Okay, good. Any questions for Meg before I go to public comment? No? Thank you very much. Any member of the public wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, and we have a second. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
The reason why I'm bringing it up, and I've discussed this with Carl Schwing, and comp time has been used for exempt employees under the present circumstances.
That is correct.
Okay. Why are we adding something, since I think sometimes executives that spend a tremendous amount of time would rather have the comp time than they would the additional compensation? I don't, I don't understand it.
Well, what we do right now is, yes, if, if an executive, and we are talking salaried employees, who gets into a situation where we have extraordinary number of hours being worked. So all of our salaried people are expected to work until they get their job done. However, there are salaried people on our executive team who will work a full week and more than 40 hours. I'm talking the normal executive schedule. And then we'll have to work a full day on Saturday, or we'll have to work a full day on a holiday for a special event, for example. Or we'll need to be working a lot of extra hours if we are under an emergency declaration. And so they're up at the EOC. This is an option for them to be paid instead of taking time off. Under government light, we don't have a very deep bench, if I can use a sports term. And so the bottom line is, is that when I don't have an executive here, that work is not being accomplished. And so, yes, they can still use comp time if they wish. This gives them an opportunity to be compensated for that time, but not take the time off. So we're hoping to get them back to the office and get them working on those other items that are continually on their plate. That is why we want, we are looking for this option. We anticipate that this would cost the city, at the most, a little less than $5,000 a year, and we expect actually that number to actually go down over time. So that's, that's where we're at.
But that's without figuring in the productivity that you gain when you have that employee back to work.
You're correct. I'm, I'm not even figuring that because that's harder to, to measure.
Okay.
Well, comp, comp, comp plan, comp, compensation or comp time, I think, is more valuable than money, and that's the reason why I brought it up.
Well, and I, and I appreciate that, and I think value is decided by the individual employee. Those who need a rest and need to step away and recharge, we understand that. They remain, that remains a choice for them under this plan. If they, if they don't, they have other things they need to do, want to do. Compensation would be yet another choice.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Bill, that, Bill, that's a great question because I had the same concerns, only I was concerned that people who've taken exempt positions rarely work 40 hours. And, you know, it's kind of given that it's probably 50 or 60 hours on a norm. But I looked at some of the hours that some of our exempt employees are putting in, especially on big weekend event days, and, and it probably makes some sense to, to do this sort of thing. So I had the same kinds of questions from a different angle. But thank you, Carl, for helping me out on that.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, council, what's your pleasure?
Move.
Motion. Then there's a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Now, is there, are we ready for our hearing?
We have part of the applicants here. We could go through the permission, the city attorney agenda.
Why don't we go ahead, yeah, do item E, and then, and then we'll go back to that. How about that?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Is that all right?
Yeah, I'll take item E. I'm Alex Boswell-Eversole, Assistant City Attorney for the record. This is a continued second reading and public hearing of the following ordinance amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 6, Signs, amending Section 6-112 to amend the regulations regarding permanent on-site signs for schools, churches, daycare centers, parks, recreational facilities, libraries, and other similar uses, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in the code, and effective date. This, this was continued from an October 21st meeting, and staff is now recommending that, to not go forward with this ordinance.
Oh.
Mike Fegon's here if you have any questions from community development.
That's weird. Ah, good, okay.
Good, good morning, council. So after taking the recommendations of the previous meetings and, and looking at the ordinance as it was written, to, to make the changes that were requested could not be done with this draft of this ordinance in its current state, just to be blunt with it. So, you know, understanding the, the Supreme Court ruling that came out after speaking with Audrey and Alex and John and Jackie about this, we felt this was the, the absolute best recommendation at this time, was to essentially turn this one down and allow, or give staff the direction to go through and reexamine the sign code in compliance with the recent decisions.
I think that's a, I think that's a very good idea. Council, is that, is that going to be your direction once I have public comment on this? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for working on that and humoring us with our questions there. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, council, would you like to go ahead and do what staff recommends, which is to go ahead and...
Motion not to make a motion?
Motion, motion not to do anything and to go ahead and give staff's instruction to go ahead and look into this a little further. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
My favorite motion, the motion to do nothing. All right. Are, are we ready for our 11 o'clock? Or we still want to wait for a while? We have no applicant here now, right?
We have half the applicant, but I don't think that counts.
That's half the applicant.
Can we go through city attorney?
Yeah, let's go through your, let's go through the attorney's report.
Thank you. I have two ordinances that I'm requesting to advertise.
Right down the middle. Gross.
What's half an applicant look like?
We're visiting half an applicant. I'm like, ah. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
A little punchy.
You are.
Yes, we are.
Scary. I'm requesting permission to advertise two different ordinances. The first is the ordinance to amend the city's tree protection ordinance, which is LDC 7. Jennifer Hagan wants to give you a little briefing about the changes. And I don't know if Sean is here, or, okay?
Morgan, yeah. Good morning again. The request to advertise relates to amending our Chapter 7 code in regards to tree preservation. Again, what it's looking to do as we pursue the Florida Green Building Coalition application points, some of the things that are needed is to redefine and clarify some of our existing code. One of them is to broaden the definition of a tree protection map. And that's one of the items before you, to meet the Florida Green Building Coalition requirements and update the submittals for that tree protection map survey location map submittal requirements. So, the other thing is to state that a permit should not be required for the removal of exotic species trees on a site. So those are the three items basically in this tree preservation amendments that are being requested.
Okay, good. Council, you all okay with that?
Make the motion to move it to public hearing.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, move it forward. And a motion and a second. Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Me too. Me, me too.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. And we also have another ordinance.
Keep us on our toes.
Good, go ahead.
Thank you. We have another ordinance. We're also requesting permission. Again, this is another one that goes under the Green Building Coalition, Green Local Government Standards Program. And this would be making changes to the city's landscape code. That's the portion that's found in the Development Services, Chapter 3, to adopt Appendix F Irrigation Standards of the Plumbing Code, require smart irrigation and landscape practice to update for smart irrigation and Florida friendly design standards. If this ordinance goes forward, like the other one, it'll be scheduled on December 2, 2015, for a first reading, December 16 for the second reading and final hearing, with local planning agency review of both ordinances on December 10. If you have questions, Jennifer Hagan can provide you with some responses.
Jennifer, it's hard to keep up with all these, this changing world, isn't it?
I know. But you know, the nice thing to know about all of this and to feel secure about it is we are doing nothing more than Florida statutes already requires. So we're bringing your codes up to date, reflecting current statutes and the Florida Building Code in regards to those irrigation standards and maintenance of irrigation and landscape plans.
Okay.
So, this item would ensure enforcement of installation and certification, again, of the landscape and the irrigation plans. So adding not much, except updating per statutes.
Okay. Council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Permission to advertise, motion approved. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Jennifer, good job, as usual. Okay, and I still don't see any, I don't even see half an applicant out there, really.
I received a email from Wayne Arnold, just for our information. Also, Carl received it. Neil just finished and is headed south. So it appears that 11:30 may be more realistic to begin Raptor Bay.
Well, she may end up being at a meeting that's not going on. But anyway.
Would you like to start without her?
I'm sure the answer is no, but the question is, are you going to start without her?
For the record, I'm Wayne Arnold with Grady Minor, representing WCI Communities. And this is actually a city application. It's not one that we've sponsored. It's part of your annexation agreement. I just spoke with Ms. Montgomery. She's between Corkscrew Road and Bonita Beach Road. I don't know how much other business. You can certainly start with your staff presentation.
This may be part of your entourage here, too.
So it's more than half a person now?
Yes. We're just missing Ms. Montgomery.
Let me go through a few housekeeping requirements.
Oh, hold on, hold on.
Okay. Could we, we've got a number of staff sitting here waiting for the city manager's report. Since we're missing Neil anyway, could we go into the city manager's report?
Absolutely.
Get through that and release staff? And then do the program?
Okay, let's do that.
Counsel?
Let's do that. City manager's report.
All right. Sorry, Wayne. All right, you have, thank you. Do you want me to go slow?
11:18.
All right. Talk real slow.
Yeah. First off, we're presenting the review of the financial reports, the monthly reports. Council, have any questions on that? Okay, very good. Second, the Veterans Day ceremony, and I know Councilmember Slackton normally talks about that, very moving, very well attended. We were glad that there was such a great attendance, especially given the comments we get about construction downtown. But people do not seem to be deterred. And so we had a great ceremony. We thank staff for their efforts and, of course, all the efforts of the veterans and, of course, their service to our country. Next, I just want to announce publicly that our own Arlene Hunter, Director of Development Services and Assistant City Manager in waiting, has been elected to the Board of Governors of the Real Estate Investment Society, which is an organization that we belong to, that she and I both belong to, in our economic development efforts. So we congratulate Arlene on that accomplishment.
Copy, maybe.
And then last, what I'd like to do is actually get Matt Feeney up here to give you just a brief update on the downtown, especially about some of the challenges that we've had of late and where we're at with those. Matt?
Good morning, Council. My name's Matt Feeney. For the record, Public Works Director. I'd like to give a, kind of a brief synopsis of where we are with the downtown project. As you know, we did discover some underground storage tanks in the vicinity of where Lohons Texaco Station used to be. We've worked through that issue with our partners at the Department of Environmental Protection. We've taken the remediation actions and the project is back on full effort, full course. We're laying waterline today and will be pursuing the drainage installation along the alleyway between Felts Avenue near Napa coming up to Old 41 next week. And then we'll follow in with the formal drainage along Old 41, probably the first week in December. So, the project is back up to full effort and moving forward. We've milled Old 41 Road from Pennsylvania all the way to Wilson Street, so the asphalt is gone. And we'll be working on the drainage and then working to rebuild the road component and get the project back moving forward in an expeditious manner. We will be installing some waterline deflections along Felts Avenue next week, which will require a temporary detour of folks that were using Felts as the main detour line. We'll be redirecting them to Shriver Street for about a week while we accomplish those waterline deflections at each intersection of those streets. So there will be a temporary change to the detour condition next week. Other than that, we are working furiously to maintain our schedule.
Okay. Any questions for Matt?
Any problems other than the obvious with the tanks?
No, actually, the tank issue was not, although it took time, it was a time-consuming effort, it really was not a magnanimous issue in terms of what we found. It's just that we found it and had to work through some fairly lockstep processes to get to where we are today.
Hallelujah. Yeah, sure, sure. Great news. Add great news.
The other thing is, we have been meeting with our larger event organizers as we come close to those. We met with Taste of Bonita last week. We're prepared for that. And it does appear that our events are not really having a negative impact through the construction, which is good news. The right folks have really, really paid attention to that and really worked hard to make sure that we are as minimalist disruption as we can be.
All right. Well, I got to tell you, just from a contractor's standpoint, it's better to go in there and go all, go for it and make a little bigger mess at once than to just make this painful for a really long time. Because that, you know, the difference between a little disruption, a lot of disruptions as far as your business, not much. I mean, you really, I mean, the more you can go at this thing, the better off we are. You know that. We've talked about that. So, it's best to just get on with it because we're looking forward to it wrapping up more than anything. So, anyway, I appreciate it. Any other questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. I know you worked hard on this and still are working hard on it. Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What else you got, Carl?
Okay, that's it, sir.
All right, we ready?
I guess we'll start. First of all, this is a transmittal hearing. And let me provide you with a little bit of information.
Give us the backstory.
The backstory. Procedurally, this is different than going for regular ordinances. And as I mentioned at your last council meeting, we were going to do something similar to a first reading. We go through and we provide a public hearing, which is required under the statute that's set forth here, which is different than our normal statute for adopting ordinances. So this is a public hearing. People have a right to comment. And after this hearing, and Jackie will give you a little bit of the history, went to the local planning agency and you'll hear about their comments in a few minutes. It then gets transmitted to Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. Now, I always call that Florida DCA because that's their old department, but they changed their name, and to other reviewing agencies. And then it will get sent back down here. So you'll see this ordinance again for final adoption, but it's going to be probably at least a month, about two months out. So I wanted to give you that. At this time, I'm going to read the title block of the proposed ordinance when you see it two months from now. It'll be the same title block. And this is an ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, amending the moderate density mixed-use plan development, future land use classification of the City of Bonita Springs Comprehensive Plan, further amending the future land use map for that expedited state review comprehensive plan amendment known as Raptor Bay Pelican Landing, RPD, CPD, which is located in Sections 5, 6, 7, and 8, Township 47 South, Range 25 East, to redesignate approximately 55.16, more or less acres of land from Lee County Outlying Suburban and Wetlands to moderate density mixed-use plan development. Again, 55.16, more or less acres, providing for an effective date. This is the public transmittal hearing and it counts as a first hearing. And you'll have a second hearing later on, once we received it back from Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. And once they go through the results, we'll have the final public hearing pursuant to Florida Statute Section 163.3184. I reviewed the affidavit of publication and it is legally sufficient and the original is on file with the city clerk's office. At this time, Jackie will provide you with the staff report and history as to this application.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. For the record, Jacqueline Gensen, as the city attorney stated, there are two application numbers before you today. One is to do the actual map amendment itself, designating the property from a Lee County land use plan designation to a City of Bonita Springs land use designation, and also to amend a portion of the text of an existing land use classification. Just to give you some background of why you're here before you today, this property was subject of an annexation agreement that was approved last year by the same city council, where this paragraph here, 3.2, stated that the city would process a city-initiated amendment to evaluate this project, which anticipated 20 stories over two floors of parking, which would exceed the 75-foot height limitation that is currently in place in one of the future land use designations. So this is why the amendment is here today before you, is to redesignate the property to a city classification, but also to address the height issue, which was explained in the annexation agreement. As I stated before in some of our other annexation cases, state statute requires that the city retains the county land use and zoning designation until the city amends its land use plan and amends the zoning to a city classification. So, just keep that in the back mind. Also, explained in the annexation agreement was how this property was to be redeveloped. It is an existing golf course and the applicant is anticipating redeveloping a portion of it for residential uses. There is a companion DRI with this case and also a zoning amendment, which would be coming before you later on this year.
And this...
I'm sorry, sir.
That there is no increase in density?
There's no increase in density in terms of the DRI and in terms of the existing zoning that transverses the properties.
All right, so this proposal doesn't increase the density?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Again, the request, which Ms. Manson read into the record, this is the location map right here. This is the parcel that is under discussion today. This is Coconut Road. The Hyatt is here. The Old Weeks Fish Camp is to the south. Also going to give you an aerial view. Sorry, Alex, I'm getting your head here. Again, this is Coconut Road. This is the Hyatt Hotel, the Old Fish, Weeks Fish Camp. The subject property outlined in dashed yellow. You'll see the Raptor Bay Golf Course and Timeshare Buildings to the east, areas of preservation to the north. And then to the west, you also have mangrove fringe areas as well. What was brought up during the LPA hearing and also as part of public comment this morning was concern of wetlands on this property that it contains. And this aerial here is from the Lee County GIS. And you'll see these areas in pink. And what that delineates are easements. So, the property, the portion where there is district wetlands is under conservation protection. Furthermore, in the DRI, there are conditions of approval that outline wetland and native sensitivity areas. And also, the companion zoning case, which will also come before council, there are also conditions that would be set forth in that document as well to further protect this area in terms of proximity to the jurisdictional wetlands and so forth. So, just to let the council know and the public know that there are protections that are already in place and already protections that staff is contemplating as part of the amendments to the DRI and the plan development. Just to go over the existing future land use designation, zoning, existing use, as I stated before, it's an existing land use category for Lee County. We're proposing it to be changed to an existing land use classification. The zoning, it's part of two plan developments, a portion of the Pelican Landing RPD and CPD, which is primarily in the city's jurisdiction. That's where the Hyatt is and also some of the other high-rise towers in Pelican Landing, the Kersey Smoot RPD. And then the applicant has a pending zoning application to amend this entire property to put it under one plan development. Existing use, as I stated before, it's a golf course and they're proposing to change up to four multifamily buildings. This is the existing Lee Plan future land use. It's designated as Outlying Suburban. And then there's areas that are designated as wetlands. And I'll go into those classifications. Outlying Suburban, the county's designation allowed one dwelling unit per acre to three dwelling units per acre. The wetland designation is based on jurisdictional data files, so sometimes they do change, they're subject to change. This is the proposed map amendment. It is to turn it into the entirety of the moderate density mixed-use plan development. This is consistent with other sections of Pelican Landing DRI that is within the city limits. So this is not something that we've done differently when we incorporated. So you'll see to the south, this entire area of Pelican Landing is in that same classification. And they also have wetlands that are under protection. This is the proposed amended land use classification. The only text that is changing is what is in strike, sorry, underlined in this case. I wanted to pull up the entire classification so you're aware of one of the issues that are concerns that was brought up at LPA. Again, there was a concern of why are we not designating the jurisdictional wetland as resource protection? And again, you'll see that this Section B of the land use classification acknowledges that there will be cases where you have wetlands and how you treat those for density purposes. So I just wanted to put that in bold so you are aware. The designation allows six units an acre for uplands, but where wetlands are at present, it's one per 20. So it's already contemplated in our existing classification. The text that is changing is in Item D. And this is different than what's in your staff report. And the reason being is we just changed this one section here to specifically reference the annexation ordinance. And it further protects the city because it's specifically tied to this property only. If another property wanted to exceed the 75 feet, they'd have to come in before city council, go through the same process, and propose a text amendment. So this is specifically tied to an area that either had a vested rights determination when we first incorporated, or, in this case, the Raptor Bay property, which is subject of the annexation agreement. Consistency with the Bonita Plan for land use patterns, again, this is part of Pelican Landing DRI. It's consistent with an established process and procedure for the other portions of Pelican Landing DRI for levels of service. This is typically required at time of local development order. And we do have Lee County looking at this application from the DRI perspective and also from the rezoning application. We have both fire districts looking at this, so Astero Fire, Bonita Springs Fire, Bonita Springs Utilities, Schools, Parks will be looking at this, as well as the Village of Astero has also been invited to look at this application as well. So in terms of level of service, that will be determined at time of local development order. When this application went before the LPA, some of the questions that came up and the staff and applicant both, or sorry, the property owner, addressed these questions was, would this affect our drinking water wells? Drinking water wells are not in this area. There might be some irrigation wells, but for drinking water, it is not. They will be serviced by Bonita Springs Utilities, who has water and wastewater service available to the project. Again, the resource protection designation, I already touched on that. There is existing language in the moderate density classification that addresses those issues. And then fire district impacts, that was brought up as well. But Chief Green from Astero Fire is aware of the project and also we have a great working relationship with them and Bonita Springs Fire. Again, based on the assessments and conclusions, it's an existing land use classification. It's to accommodate the annexation agreement as contemplated by city staff. And staff is recommending that we transmit the proposed amendments to the state planning agency for adoption.
Okay.
And Mike Kirby is here, if you have any questions, as well as the property owners have their agents as well.
Okay. You have any questions for Jackie before we continue? No?
On one of the maps that you showed, the existing vacation rental place, on a map that's included in the packet, it shows buildings that you'd said were preserved area. I think it was the map before that showed...
This one?
It was one that it showed the timeshare area and...
This one?
Yeah, that one up on the top side there. You can see the buildings on the right side of the timeshare. And then you said the left side of that area was protected area. But one of the maps that's included in the packet shows other buildings in that area.
I'd have to look at the map.
Yeah, that, the area that the buildings are in, that's unincorporated Lee County.
Correct. This is just the City of Bonita Springs limitations. This is far boundary for the city.
Part we're talking about is completely vacant right now, right?
Correct.
Yep. Okay.
It's easy to get confused up there, though, Mike. I mean, you don't even see, there's not a difference in the city limit sign or anything. You just, you're there and you're out.
Yep. Okay. Hi, Neil.
Hi.
Hi. It's your turn. I think.
For the record, my name is Neil Montgomery and I concur with everything that Jackie said. said, if you all remember, when we did the annexation agreement, it was agreed when the property came in that it would go into the same land use category that the rest of Pelican Landing in the city is in, so this makes sense. The DRI development order, while that's not here today, it does provide that there will be 614 acres of wetland, salt and freshwater wetland preserve, and the entire DRI, including, you know, the county and the city, there's only 10 acres for wetland impacts, so I think when you look at that as a whole, pretty impressive that they're protecting 614 acres. So, nothing in this plan amendment changes that provision in the DRI, those restrictions will still control, and as it relates to traffic, I heard that someone had a question about traffic earlier, again, because it is a development of regional impact, when it was originally approved, it identified the total number of net new external trip that could be generated by this project, changing that map doesn't change anything, we're not asking for an increase to the DRI in the number of units, and actually, if you were to go back and look at progression over time, the total density in the project has decreased because they kept the number of units constant but added properties, so the density's gone down, so it's still a really low-density project. Do you have any questions?
Council, any questions for Neil?
Just a comment.
Yep, go ahead.
It sits right at the top of District 1, and Councilman Ferrer and I have had a conversation or two about the wetlands, and there were several, there were three things of the LPA, I think, that were important to make sure the council is considering and recognized that there, that has been dealt with. One was the wetlands themselves, and I think that's been adequately addressed, and Councilman Ferrer, I'm still having an opportunity to speak later, if not. Two was the fact that it looked like there was going to be an increased number of doorfronts and increased number of people living there, which is not.
Correct, it's not.
But the third one, and this is one that we can't really deal with because it sits in the City of, Village of Soestero, but the folks who live in Spring Creek Village and Spring Creek Development at the end of Spring Creek Road have to make an effort to get out a lot of times onto Coconut Road because of all the traffic that comes from Hyatt events, and they're all concerned about the fact that this is going to increase traffic, and it will. So, there's going to be an issue of safety, and at some point in the future when we start to talk about that very issue, we need to talk with the Village of Soestero about some sort of traffic slowing mechanism in that, on that road, whether it be a stoplight, and I think that's probably the most logical thing to do, but when we get to that point, we really need to, really need to talk to the Village of Soestero, please.
Yeah, and I'm not volunteering anything at this time because I don't know, but as future local development orders come in, you know, as the project builds out, we'll have to submit additional traffic analysis, and if there are improvements that are site-related improvements, developer will have to undertake those, if it's a city, village, county improvement, then obviously that's on the government.
No, I understand that, and your point was made, and I understood, that when this DRI was put together, the traffic assessment was made, but realistically, when you add the Hyatt in there and the events and an additional number of people, we, I'll say it a third time, it needs to be addressed, that intersection can be a very, very dangerous intersection. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up because that's something that Mayor Bados and Larry Keicher and I have been talking about, we understand the importance of that area to, it's kind of a three-way agreement there, so yeah, that's something that we need to address, yeah, absolutely.
But the good news when it comes to traffic is we're well below the original number of approved trips, so.
We're just talking bigger picture.
Not arguing that, but I can tell you, I come in and out of that road regularly, and it is very difficult.
Okay, oh.
I was just gonna say, and I've spoken with some folks over there too, they're really concerned, in fact, I had just come up, Audrey, and saw you at the ship dedication, any, I guess I would ask for your, any thoughts or opinions on this, or legal opinions?
None other than what was already provided, I mean, there's some other applications, remember, the Hyatt is part of the Pelican Landing DRI, so that was contemplated in there, and I noticed that Neil did bring her transportation planner, so if you have questions of him, you can ask him.
I think the thing to do here is, like I said, through negotiating a three-way agreement between the Village of Soestero, the county, and ourselves, is to go ahead and keep track, do some traffic counts there, and when the time comes to do something, see that it gets done and see that it gets funded in a proper way where there's buy-in from the development community, everything like that. I think everyone has recognized at some point in time improvements will have to be done to the intersection and to the infrastructure altogether there, it's going to be an important resource to the entire community there, so I think the main thing is that as the months go by and even into next year or whatever, that that relationship between Soestero and us and the county becomes even more important, so yes, we do need to stay on top of that, and we have already been talking about it.
Great, thank you.
I really appreciate it, so. Let's go ahead and go to public comment at this time, any member of the public wishing to speak, please come forward on this matter.
Yes, Rick Steinmeier, I understand is this new development would be protected by the Soestero Fire District? Is Spring Creek Village a Soestero Fire District? I'm just curious whether the Benita District could expand to take care of this project and collect the taxes from it, thank you.
Good, thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. You've been working out, buddy? Look like it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All compliments are accepted. Yeah, I know.
There was one green sheet that came out, and that's the reason I came to this meeting, it wasn't a lot of information, but I got a lot of information, good information, happy to see the density hasn't changed, I think I made that clear, Mr. Mayor, and I remember from time back where some new development went in, and it was at your initiation of DRI, and that lived a long time, so that shows advanced thought, and I'm glad that some advanced thought went into this. My question now is, and I know the Weeks property isn't on the agenda per se, but this abuts the Weeks property, is there a move or is there a possibility that there's an annexation in the works or an acquisition in the works by this property for the Weeks property that has since changed its direction?
You mean from this buyer, yeah, I have no idea.
Yeah, I just want to...
I've heard that rumor, but it's a rumor.
Speculation. Really sorry that they changed direction, but that's not an issue here yet, but it does abut it, and we should be aware of that.
We'll come back to that meeting.
Yes, I will, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wishing to come forward? Seeing none, council, what's your pleasure?
Move this.
We have a motion to move this item? Is there a second?
Second.
Can transmit specifically, Audrey?
Ah, yes.
I'd like the motion to transmit.
I took it to mean that.
And there's a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, alright, what else you got for us, Audrey?
Nothing else.
Nothing else, okay, we are to mayor and councilman items and reports, and let's start down there with Dr. Stevens.
Let's go with Janet, she has an appointment. Okay, alright, thanks, just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor and council, the Center for Performing Arts has an opening this Sunday for the MO auditorium, and I'd invite those of you who have not been to the Center for Performing Arts and their new building to come and visit, it's a wide variety of venues, and it's an important part of this city. Secondly, Taste of Benita Rotary Club, Benita Noon Club is this Sunday from noon to 5:00, and the mayor and I will be working there periodically.
I think the Saturday will be not-for-profits, so there's a Saturday part of it too.
It's a whole weekend, this thing has grown like topsy over the years, and it's a lot of fun for everybody to come, please come, enjoy the restaurateurs and those who work in the food industry here in Benita, thank you Rotary Club for all your work, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Janet?
Thank you, well, just to piggyback on that, there's this handsome guy in the paper doing the finger-looking-good thing for the taste, so I was gonna say, yeah, do it. December 1st, Holiday in the Park, just want to bring that up too, because that is a fantastic event within our community, and, you know, we're gonna work around everything else that's going on down there, and as Matt mentioned, you know, the events are still doing well, so it's awesome, and I know this will bring everybody out, because we love to see the tree lighting in the snow, and it's a great thing, and I just like to take an opportunity to wish everybody the best Thanksgiving.
Excellent. Pete, what you got for us, bud?
I guess we've probably said enough on the high school today, but I just want everybody to know, we're all committed to making this happen, you know, growing pains, poor planning in the past, whatever you want to call it, but we're committed to making it happen, so just everybody keep that in mind. Taste of Benita has already been mentioned, Great Veterans Day in the park, Dakota Myers, very, very interesting and decorated young man, had some time, had the opportunity to spend some time with him afterwards at a couple of events, gave a great speech over in Benita Bay, and gotta keep bragging about my son, believe it or not, they had a game scheduled this weekend in Tampa, the team was disqualified for whatever reason, so what that means is our young men from Benita Springs and Soestero, and a few other towns around will be playing for the state championship in Orlando Thanksgiving Day weekend, so here we go. That's it.
Alright, thanks, Mike?
Yeah, just wanted to talk about Taste of Benita, to make sure that the way they're gonna set up isn't gonna block Front Street because the businesses still do need the access, being as it is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and also the Holiday in the Park coming up. But also just a reminder, you know, all the businesses are still open on Old 41, even the ones that are not in the closed area are being heavily affected by traffic no longer coming through Old 41, so I mean, if anybody needs, you know, the barber shop's affected, the pottery place, florist, the ice cream shop, just everybody's been affected, you know, if you can think about downtown 41 first when you need to make your purchases, that would be greatly appreciated, Benson's Grocery, another heavily affected business, and also, I'll see you at the Performing Arts Open House on Sunday, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Good deal, good deal. Yeah, I just wanted to thank Royal Scoop, we had, they invited myself and my dog Yogi down to scoop ice cream, I was a little disappointed because Yogi didn't get to do that, but apparently that's against the rules.
No thumbs.
I don't get it.
He doesn't have thumbs.
I don't get it.
He doesn't have thumbs.
How do you know?
I'm seeing.
Anyway, so, but no, we had fun, we raised over $500 because of, for our charity there, and, which is charity, which, you know, they help find homes for dogs, and it's really good, it's really good, it's a rescue dog thing, and really near to my heart, but anyway, thank you for them, and also, everybody out there, Brooks Legacy, but everybody needs to go downtown, and you need to go down there, and you need to buy some bicycles, and you need to go buy some bait and fish, and you need to go down and see the Lyles Hotel anyway, yeah, it's a little bit of a mess, but you know what, if you want to know what Old Benita used to look like, go down there and look at it, that's what it used to look like, without the fence, the dirt road part is what it is, but looking forward to all these things, the holiday and events, and staff, you're doing a great job, everybody hang in there a year or so from now, it's gonna be all worth it, so thank you very much, and would you like, somebody like to, Bill, what do you got?
Patience is a virtue.
It certainly is.
Yeah.
I hope to get some someday. Anyway, would you like to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Good deal, and at this time, public comment, anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward. Seeing none, thank you very much, everyone.
Ben Herschinson. I saw you, Ben. I heard the gavel. I heard the gavel, and gavel's been down there.
My pleasure.
White gavel, Ben Herschinson, for the record, I was channel surfing, and lo and behold, I come across a city council meeting, wow, that was more exciting than all the reruns I was watching, so anyway, here I am. I was gonna come down and say, commend the city council on what it did earlier, we were together on the issue of DRGR, I hope that ends it, but something tells me it's not. Again, I'm just gonna reiterate what others have already said more eloquently, and that is, the clock is ticking, the clock is ticking, folks, whatever it takes, please make a decision, you're not gonna please everybody, we know that, I mean, anybody's on any association work knows, sits on a board, you make a decision always in the best interest of whom you're serving, we've got to get that high school here, I want to get excited about a high school, I want to back the football team, I want to do all of the things that a citizen is supposed to do when they live in a city, let's not lose this to Soestero. On another issue, which is really personal, and without casting aspersions, I now have built my home here 10 years ago, and to a lot of people, I'm just a kid, a new kid on the block, 10 years in a city this old doesn't mean much, but I've seen a lot of changes occurring throughout the city with development, especially the last several years, and I'm gonna bring something up which I know is gonna fall, people on the city are gonna say, oh no, here we go, so Ben is gonna suggest something, or I have a concern, and that's just me as a citizen, I look in the area that I reside in, the Benita Springs Golf and Country Club area, it's kind of sticking out there a little bit, and we are a collection of small communities, a lot of HOAs, condo developments, 50, 60, 100, small communities, we're not leaving, most of us behind a huge wall, and I get concerned sometimes, frankly, and again, I'm gonna repeat, without casting aspersions, I get concerned about underrepresentation in my area, I don't know, the only possibility there is the whole horrible word of, quote, redistricting, and I realize the city just went through that not too long ago, but I'm throwing the word out, and I've been willing to sit with anybody on city staff just to begin to investigate what's involved, the process, how long it takes, what you have to do, and I realize that this is not happening, there's gonna be a long process if indeed we go in that direction, and I'm willing to offer whatever time I have, because I do get concerned, and we're over there by ourselves, maybe it's best to be part of another district, I don't know, I'm only talking about me, I haven't shadowed with anybody about it, I'm not a politician, but I really get concerned about this, so I'm throwing that out there, I'm willing to meet with anybody from the city concerning this, and I hope that that will take place, because just the way the circumstances are in this city, I really believe that all of us in this particular catchment area simply are not getting the representation that we need, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Yes, for the record, Kathy McGrath, after listening to the comments that you all made, and I'm talking about the high school, I just want to bring up one thing, I understand the position you're in, you are trying to appease and come up with a solution, but as Ben just said, and I said earlier, the clock is ticking, we don't have the benefit of time, the deadline is December 31st, today is November 18th, the time to look for solutions and other locations was long ago, now this is not a new issue, this has been going on for almost two years, you are supposed to assist and cooperate with the school board in any way possible, you're an elected official, but it's their responsibility to educate our children, which means the needs, the location, the site, the requirements and everything, and they've done that, I don't have to be politically correct, I mean, y'all have to kind of appease everybody and be generic, but I don't have to. They have eliminated 11 other sites over a period of two years, they have looked at their requirements, they came up with a decision, and as far as I'm concerned, they made the right decision, and I have not sent it yet, but I have it at home, I'm going to send to them, you have done your job, you've looked at all the solutions, go forward now, because you know what you're doing, by looking and having these meetings and looking at other places, you are gonna put our city into not getting the high school, and this is not a threat, this is a reality, it's on, they have the contingency plan right now, if you could talk, and maybe you have, to the people I have, who have children, who one goes to a portable here and the other goes to Norfolk Myers, if you want to go to a STEM school, you go to Dunbar, we need the STEM school here, please don't jeopardize us, the school, I'm not of the opinion, I don't care where it's built, I care where it's built, it should be built where they have decided it should be built, because they have looked at this for two years, and I'm hoping that if anybody agrees with the, in your own words, please, please, I don't like this thing where someone sends forward, 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 that's unacceptable, in your own words, if you agree with me that they've done their job, their due diligence, and they have found the right site, please contact your school board, because any future meetings, any future looking for solutions, that's the time, we don't have the time for that, please, and the other thing is, I don't know whether you all are aware of it, but I am, I hope not too many of you have been receiving nasty emails, you know, we can agree to disagree, I respect all of you, even if I don't agree with you all the time, and that's the way we all should be, but to suggest that our elected officials are unfit to serve and should resign, I imagine some of the school boards hearing that too, and that's terrible, so what I'm saying is, I understand those of you who are trying to appease the opponents, I understand that, but they've done their job, so come on, folks, get behind the school board, let them know they've done their job over two years, they've picked the right site, and go for it, no delay, we cannot, cannot lose our high school here, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
I'm in trouble now, I'm gonna disagree with Kathy, with her. Why did the school district purchase the place on Tower Road 10 or 15 years ago? There's nobody out there, there's this water treatment plant, I don't think the noise and everything would be a problem, you might have to build a little extra road around the water out there and stuff, but I think that's to be a good place for it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward? Seeing none, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.